Okay, I would like to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, November 19th. It is 7:04 PM. And let me read into the record the following in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency. The November 19th meeting tonight, public meeting of the zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. Okay, so we have three hearings tonight and one continued hearing. So I will start off with the continuance of the Matuska hearing. And I know that the last time we had kind of went through concerns that the board had had, heard from some of the neighbors, and I'm assuming that Mark Matuska's at this point hopefully have some feedback for us. I know they've sent us some additional information. And I will turn it over to them to tell us where we are in the process at this point.
Hey, I did prepare a presentation because I think a lot of the comments made against the project were based on comments like the garage wouldn't fit into the neighborhood and things like that. So I did prepare a slide presentation showing some pictures of the neighborhood because I assume not all the board members have a chance to drive to the neighborhood and understand what I'm talking about. But probably the biggest aspect is you should have the most recent drawing dated October 15th, Division 4 of the drawing, which shows the water flow mitigation efforts that were taken with this project. Because that was one of the big concern was the water flow.
It was correct.
Right. So I don't know if you want to do the presentation or you want me to run it off my computer here?
Go ahead. You can you can run it unless Lake Kim wants to.
Okay, and I also want to mention, I think you.
Want me running anything technologically, trust me.
But I also want to mention that you should have gotten a letter from Outback Engineering today too, talking about the water flow, how it's being mitigated. So I'm not sure if you received that as yet.
I'm looking now. That's what's nice about having Kathy here because she can keep things a little more organized than I can. Unless another board member wants to chime in and that they do remember receiving.
Hey, John, it's Nora. I don't remember seeing it. The last thing we got late today was the presentations by the homeowner.
That's my record too.
I think the letter would have came this morning from Outback. So maybe Kathy, maybe somebody got it. I'm not sure yet.
Well, let's, let's, let's go with your presentation. And if you could kind of make it as succinct as possible. So like I said, we have three other hearings tonight. And please don't take it the wrong way. If I find you're being repetitive and pointing out other examples, and you've made your point to the board, I'll kind of move you along. So go ahead.
Okay, hang on one second.
We had it open already.
Hang on one second.
Where's the presentation? Where's my presentation down here?
Yep.
It's one of these things. Is this it?
Yep.
Is this it?
No. No. Hang on one second.
We're not technically savvy as we like to be here. I'm on a different computer.
That's right there in front of you. Yeah, I think you just had something up that said your presentation.
Yeah, I would, I would click on what you clicked on the bottom before, the orange symbol. Yep, right there. And select it again so it pops up on your screen. There we go. And then go over to PowerPoint and it should be there. On the left, it's the orange circle.
No, it can't be doing in PowerPoint. I had to do it in.
It was a Google Docs.
Google Doc.
Oh, I thought I saw the presentation in your recent.
Yeah, PowerPoint will not work on this computer because it doesn't have that kind of software.
Hang on, I can pull it up though. Hang on, I can pull it up in that. Hang on, I'm sorry. Yes, I can. Hang on. It is here. And it was done here. There it is.
Is that?
And present.
There it is.
Can you see that?
Yes.
I'm trying to go pretty quickly best I can. Obviously, a lot of concerns raised were about the cap of the neighborhood. And that's what a lot of my pictures will be addressing. The setback, the water runoff, and the size. As far as the other part, my special permit request included the pavilion and the walkway to the lake, stuff like that. Then it didn't seem to be any concerns there beyond the fact that there's a lot of, you know, 25% in previous area in the property. But most of that area with the pavilion and the walkway is not water is going to be moving south towards the the Hertz property or the Taboo property and stuff like that, you know, going south that direction. You know, I want to emphasize, you know, what the bylaws says, and I highlighted 7.4.1.2 because the main thing we should be looking at.
Mr. Mr. Matuska, can you continue on to the portion of the presentation that has to do with the neighborhood? We're familiar with our own bylaws, sir.
Right. Well, okay, I'll keep going. Whoops. You know, like I said, my house is known as side towards water drive, which is known as 31 Nelson Shore Road. And and the whole neighborhood, Nelson Shore Road, as well as its water drive, there is no uniformity to the homes. All them kind of structures there. There's all them size of lots. For example, Mr. Hertz property is, you know, less than a quarter of an acre. And there's another lot that's 4.8 acres. There's a home that's three stories high sitting next to a one-story home. There's a, there's a one property along, you have a ranch and a cottage, you know, on the same property. And and also be a carport, things like that. There's tons of stuff on the same property. And there's also a lot of probably the setbacks of five feet or less. And obviously, in my request, my nearest setback, I mentioned before, is 10 feet at one corner of the garage and a large at the other thing. And as far as the neighborhood character, there is no general character. It's a very eclectic neighborhood. You know, it's a smorgasbord of designs and styles, lot sizes, and things like that. Sort of, to say it doesn't fit in, it doesn't make sense because everybody looks different. For example, the top picture here is my first, my next door neighbor to the north. You can see it's a gigantic house on the water. This is still a non-conforming lot, still less than 1.6 acres. You can see how there's a boathouse on the bottom there. On the right-hand side of that house is the original house that he had in there and used. Then he added on the gigantic addition to make it a mansion. On the lower left corner is the other side of that house. And I stroked in the red that he has a two-car garage. And I wanted to highlight that because in that same property, once again, non-conforming lot, he also has a separate four-car garage on the same property. And the picture on the bottom right, which ties in more to the pavilion, but doesn't seem to have any issue with, you can see there's a boathouse with a black railing above it. And to the right, you see a cement retaining wall. That's the corner of my property to which that walkway would come down to. So you can see how I'm putting a patio down by the water, be next to the boathouse. So it's kind of like a similar use. You know, so.
No, you hit the wrong one.
I hit the wrong button. Hold on. You know, now, next to me is the Taboos. And they're in the yellow house to the left of this picture. The next house, you can see the Taboo house is three stories high. And they're right next to a one-story house. And these lots, of course, are a lot smaller than mine. But it was again, it's a very close to neighborhood. Nothing, I have a mansion, you got my house, then you have things like this. I keep doing the wrong button. And going down the street, this is, I remember, I think it's three-edged water drive. So it's, you know, it's pretty much diagonally across from the Hertz resident. Once again, a totally different design house. It's an A-frame, it's got indoor pool, it's all different kinds of things. You know, and there was comments made about all the garages being 24 by 24. And there are a number of houses on the street, Nelson Shore Road, with the newer homes, they have attached garages. Now, some homes have none. You know, there's an occasional one-car garage, but there are two-car garage and they're attached. When they're attached, they're generally 24 by 24. But some houses have a garage like that, also have an additional garage, or they also have a carport, and they have other accessory structures. With my property, I'm trying to do the four-car garage, so I don't need a bunch of different buildings. I want to have just one structure to cover everything. And also, according to the minutes, the Taboos mentioned last time, the next door neighbor's four-car garage is 24 by 33. That's not true. It's actually a 40-foot long garage. So my garage would be about 10% longer than that. So it's, to me, how can I be keeping in the cap of the neighborhood if I have the same thing next door? And also, once again, to show how different this neighborhood is, I get a single-family home. That large mansion you saw is really like two houses connected by a breezeway. They call one in-law of the partners, a complete house. It has a kitchen, the bathroom, the whole ball of wax. You know, so there are other garages that, you know, that aren't 24 by 24. Unfortunately, on the town's website, can't get the actual dimensions. I couldn't get the square footage. So I'm using that three-edged water A-frame as an example. They have a 396-foot square garage and a 400-foot square foot carport for the cars, 880 feet combined, so 10576. 10-edged water drive, the house next to the Hertz residence, is 1,088 square feet, you know, compared with mine, about 90, almost 90% the size of mine. The north side, I mentioned already, with the 40-foot wide garage, but they also sized that, besides the four-car garage, and originally attached two-car garage, they also have two sheds and a boathouse. They had a third shed, but they took it down the past year. If you've got Nelson Shore Road, five houses up Nelson Shore Road to the top of the hill, this house up there with a three, three-car garage. A question from that is, is a guy, what they call it a barn, it's really like a garage, is 1,200 square feet. So once again, it's in keep, my garage is keeping in that that sense. And then even between there and here, the 17 Nelson Shore Road, they have the same size, the 576-foot, 576-square-foot garage, but they just have a 300-square-foot carport, they get 876 total. On top of that, they have a 720-square-foot barn and another building, 192 square feet. So once again, multiple structures. So this is the top of the hill, this is one of the three-car garage attached. And you can see that the garage is about the size of the house, you know, visually. So yeah, despite what the Taboo said, my garage footprint is smaller than my house footprint, but it is comparable in size. In the same order of magnitude, I admit that. The barn picture is the house across the street from that one with what I call the garage barn. So once again, you know, if I was aesthetics and stuff, or size, mine's, mine's going to look a lot better than that.
Mr. Matuska, let me interrupt you for a second here, sir. And I appreciate the presentation. But if memory serves me correct, you know, I think that what we're looking to focus on at this point, I'm not personally as worried about, I shouldn't say I'm not worried about the character of the neighborhood, but I'm, I'm willing to concede or agree that there are plenty of other properties in that neighborhood that have larger garages, are similar characteristics, better or worse, or less, I should say, than the size of of your house. You know, I think, I'm not so sure the zoning board at this point is going to make, base their decision on whether you're in the character strictly, whether you're in the character of the neighborhood. I know one of the issues that was brought up was the, you know, encroaching into the setback and that the possibility of referencing it needed to be within the setback, and the possibility of adjusting the plans to some degree to, to make it less non-conforming into the setback. The other issue was water, obviously, where it was going to flow to. You know, if you could, if you could focus on those two at this point, and I'm sure as we get into this, my fellow board members are going to have some questions. So I think at this point, you've made your point that, you know, there are other, other properties in that neighborhood that do have oversized or larger garages, or bigger or smaller. And to your point, it's an eclectic neighborhood, possibly so.
But okay, on this, on the second half of this slide, what I'm trying to emphasize is that because right now, your comment suggested that I would reduce the size of the garage. And I did review that option. And I've decided, and my wife and I have decided that, you know, the lesser of the two evils, keep the same garage size. You know, if this permit is denied, I move back 20 feet from the sideline and 40 feet from the street if I have to. And I hope, and maybe you can consider, let me move closer to the street a little bit, but not closer to the sideline. Whatever this board decides, I have to, I have to abide by. But as far as going to a two-car garage, I'd be forced into doing multiple structures. And I think for the neighborhood, for myself, for my property, it's just not going to be the best option to go. So I am proceeding this way. And these I had, the bylaws up in the beginning was emphasize the point is, the question isn't so much of moving the garage over to the, within the 20-foot setback, it's the difference, it's the detrimental effect of that move as opposed to keeping it 20 feet away. Which I'm going to get into a little further down in this presentation. You know, I talked about the setbacks. Like I said, there's, there's setbacks right now about five feet or less. And I'm using edge water drive because they're in the process of adding addition to their kitchen right now. So I was able to get a copy of their plans. And they put their carport in the recent pass, 50 feet from the property line, which is heavily the same distance as the garage next door on 10-edged, 10-edged water. But also, to bring out that the, in previous area, five exceeds a 25%. And I thought I was being beat up on that as well on my property with the water flow. So this is just showing what edge water drive looks like. Like I said, this is a quarter acre lot. And you see, there's not only, there's four structures circled in green, there's actually two livable structures there. There's, there's a house and a cottage. If you notice the one with the red arrow, never mind, if you go actually to the lower left circle, you see where the carport is. And you see I was 50 from the property line. So on that same scale, you can see that the house with the red arrow pointing to the borderline, that second house is right on the property line, you know, and most of that, everything in the lower half of that drawing, except for where it shows the leaching field, is pretty much a paved driveway. So it's like, you know, so much of the property is covered. Yeah, so you know, as far as a setback, it's in keeping with the cap for the neighborhood. And this is some views of it, you can see.
Mr. Matuska, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully express my opinion. I believe our bylaws when, or the law, when it refers to keeping in the character of, of the neighborhood, has to do with, you know, the structure and its appearance and whatnot. It doesn't mean because someone else has a pre-existing, potentially grandfathered-in structure that is within the setback, that all of a sudden that creates a new setback for the neighborhood. It doesn't even.
And I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. So. And I understand it can't go from one property to the other to say, because they got it, I can have. I do understand that.
Okay, so let's, let's not go down that road, please.
And people will claim that the property value will be decreased. And what I want to emphasize there was, obviously, I feel this garage will have some value of my property. I'd be, if this is approved, obviously, I'd be the main beneficiary. Because I tried to state at the last meeting, I do feel I took steps to make it better for the neighborhood overall. Now, if I do it 20 feet from the sideline, it would be parallel to the sideline. And there's, there's, right now, there'd be no need for me to, no mandate for me to do water mitigation the way I'm proposing to do it here. So, and the same thing, I mentioned before about turning the angle for a variety of reasons. Whether or not my neighbors agree with me, the, you know, I feel it would be less obtrusive to my, to the Taboos property, as well as, you know, that my neighbors across the street looking towards the lake obstruct their view less. And by being close to the street, I'm getting further away from entrance of the Taboos. Now, now, they may not agree. So that's a judgment call. But my, my point is, you know, my sense from that meeting was, they're hoping that I reduce it down to a two-car garage size. So the question is, is really how much more detrimental it will be to have my garage built 20 feet from the sideline versus that proposed location. Because either way, it's going to get built. Were they considered an ISO or not, they feel it hurts their value, that's going to exist. The question, does this really hit their value by being a few feet closer to their property line on a part of that yard where their garage is sitting? So that's up to the board to decide. And same thing, I plan to make my garage look really nice to tie into the capture of my main home, as opposed to my neighbor's four-car garage, which I said has a window on the door, but I actually was wrong about that. Actually, no windows on it. It's a box. It's a big 40-foot-long box. So mine would be a lot more attractive than that.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Nora.
If I might, this is Nora. I'm going back to what was requested at the last meeting, and I'm looking for them. We were looking for engineering plans that was going to show exactly the water impact is and the corrected impervious coverage percentage. Do we have, I'm not seeing that in my packet.
You should have Division 4 of the drawing dated October 15th, which was, has all that in there.
I, I'd like to have that spoken to at this point, more than, John, to what you were saying about all the pictures and everything. My, my concern is more the impervious coverage percentage and the water reclamation system.
Agreed, Nora. I'm hoping he's going to get there soon.
Gotly. So once again, this is the view from across Edge Water Drive, the neighbors' property from looking from the street, with the trees right on the street edge. This was talking about where the water flow is today. The top left picture is approaching 8-edged water drive from the south. They just recently paved it, paved it for the first time as a dirt road. Obviously, it runs downhill towards 8-edged water drive. And from the bottom picture, that's the end of the 8-edged water drive coming from my house going towards the same property. The water is going to flow downhill. There is going to be some runoff from my property.
Mr. Matuska, we, we would prefer to have you show us the plans and have somebody, if not yourself, present the water flow as opposed to showing us pictures and making assumptions as to what it's going to look like or what's going to happen.
I didn't include that drawing in my presentation, but you should have that drawing. All the board members should have that drawing at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I just, Amy Questle, Town Council, if I may.
Go ahead, Amy.
I, I just shut off my camera so I could go through everything. And I don't have that drawing. And I have been, I've kept up with everything that Kathy has sent. So I don't have it.
Yeah, I'm looking for it. I scroll.
There was a lot of submissions today that was really unacceptable. So I don't know.
There were a lot. Yeah, there were a lot of leaks.
This was submitted, this revision, this revision was submitted at the last hearing, not this one, the revised, the revised drawing.
It was prepared on October 15th. It's probably submitted that day or the day after, right afterwards. You've had it in time for the last meeting that ended up continuing.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you submitted, it was submitted this morning.
No, I said there's a letter for Outback Engineering submitted this morning, but the drawing was submitted a month ago.
I don't see the letter either.
What did the letter contain from Outback Engineering?
Why don't you read it, Mike?
It's basically summarizing that, you know, with a mitigation, because it includes, if you had a driving in front of you, about collecting all the runoff from the garage roof and sending it to an infiltration chamber. Likewise, it shows I'd be sloping the yard and the driveway, including turning around the driveway towards a, what do they call it on this thing?
All right, Mr. Matuska, hang on a second.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interject here real quick? Can I make a recommendation? If you're able to show a presentation, Mr. Matuska, can you show us the drawing itself here?
I, I, it could be a while to find in my emails here.
Yeah, I've got it here.
Hold on, we can find it here.
Mr. Matuska, just a clarification. Is it a letter from Outback, or is it a new set of plans specifying the water?
The letter, today it was a letter. A month ago was the complete updated drawing, Division 4.
Okay, so the drawings we have that looks, I believe that were dated 10, 15, 20?
Right, that's the drawing.
Are the drawings. Okay, and you don't have anyone, and Outback is not here representing you tonight, correct? You're on your phone?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna, Chris Carmichael.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna call on you, sir, only because you may be, maybe I'm gonna offend somebody here, but you may be the most qualified.
So be offended? Okay.
Well, no, you definitely, that's, that's without say. You can definitely handle that. So, no, on that, are those plans going to tell us, and I'm going to plead ignorance here, are those plans from back in 10, 15, 20, which I believe are page seven in the packet of all of the hearing information that?
If I can just jump in, John, I think I know where you're going. I think a site plan that we can all view on the screen, so we can have a conversation about two-edged water drive, not eight, 10, 15, or 20, would help us get in the right direction. So we've been talking about everybody else, but we need to be talking about two-edged water drive. And that's, that, that's the site plan that we should be looking at right now. Those are my thoughts.
No, I agree. My only, my only question to you was, the plans we had last time that Mr. Matuska is referring to, did they give us enough information to determine or understand the water?
I really, I've seen 1,000 blueprints since that date, so I can't, I can't speak on it, John, I'm sorry.
Okay.
To, to me, I feel it's clear that it's addressing the water flow. You know, I can show you the letter from Outback this morning. I could pull that for you, where they summarize that point, if that would help you.
Amy, if, Amy, if he presents a letter to us via Zoom, is that okay, or?
Um, no, it has to be, because we need to know that it was actually filed. So it really wouldn't be part of the record. Although, I mean, you know what, it's, everything's different because it's virtual, John, or Mr. Chairman. So yeah, I guess it would. I mean, it would be, I guess it would be akin to him handing it to you at the meeting.
Yeah, okay. Okay, if you can present, can you present that to us now, sir?
Stop sharing, hang on one second.
Might I suggest that we continue this till maybe later in the meeting, until they can find that site plan, and then we can pick it back up later? Is that acceptable?
That actually is a very good idea. So, Amy, if I'm gonna continue, do we need to do anything other than say we're gonna, we don't need to vote or anything? We can do, I can just hold off and?
Just because the, the hearing actually did open, I would just make a motion to continue to the end of the meeting. And that's.
I'll make that motion right now.
Okay, Chris made the motion. Do we have a second to continue? Who's that, Chris Cede?
Yep, second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. And I don't have my cheat sheet, so I'm just gonna go by the screen. So in no particular order, all in favor, yay, opposed to nay. Nora?
Yay.
Chris Cede?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yay.
And Jeff Horn, the Jeff maker today. Actually, Jeff can't vote on it. Who was my, I'm trying to think.
You, Jerry.
Oh, Jerry, sorry, Jerry. You're right in front of me here. Jerry, yay and a?
Yay.
Okay. All right, motion to continue to the end of the meeting, so.
That's so they can pull this, the, the site plan up, and we can have a conversation on it, just so they understand.
Correct, yes. We're gonna come back and continue it, but we want to make sure we have everything available. Anything, Mr. and Mrs. Matuska, Matuska, excuse me, that you think you are going to need to present? Make sure you have it ready and available when we come back. Okay. Let's go on to our next meeting. Which is the Pink Haring. And give me a second. So I can. Okay, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with mass general laws as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November 19th, 7:00 PM, to hear the petition of Catherine Pink for a special permit under 6.1, 6.3.2, and 7.4, as requested to raise an existing eight-by-24 accessory building and construct a new 12-by-24 accessory building that would be within the side setback on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 119 Hemlock Shore Road. It is owned by Carolyn Gudrow, Catherine Pink, and Janice Pink. Amy, do I need to read the governor's order at the end of each one of these? Or did the opening carry that? Amy, do I need to read the governor's order at the end of each one of these, or did the opening carry that for us?
Nope, the opening was fine.
Excellent. Okay, so who is presenting on behalf of? Mrs. Pink is.
I am, John, Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Okay, Jamie, well, you're over here from the planning board, I'm assuming that means Kathy may be joining us soon, hopefully.
She's here.
Awesome, all right, that'll make my job easier. All right, Jamie, why don't you tell us what is proposed and what they're trying to do?
All right, Mr. Chair, if I may share screen, I'd like to put up the plan and we can, and we can go over the project.
Absolutely, feel free.
Thank you. All right, so good evening, my name is Jamie Bissonette with Zenith Consulting Engineers. We're here before you tonight for the demolition raising of an existing outbuilding accessory structure. And the reconstruction of it. This property is going to be having some some work done to it. As far as stabilization on the slope being with the C wall. So as a means to be able to get to the front of the water side of the house and construct the C wall. The existing outbuilding is in the way. And we've had the contractors look at it and it's just not something that can be moved and 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 fair and good shape. So the the client has has decided that instead of risking it. We're going to take the building down during construction and reconstruct it. We'd like to add an additional four feet onto the building, just for extra capacity in it. We're not going to be getting any closer to the existing property lines. Right now, we're presently about three quarters of a foot and we're going to be roughly about a foot off of the edge. When it's done, we're gonna, we're gonna roughly hold the front corner and we even want to do the same angle, it's the backside that we're going to extend the additional four feet on. And so that's why we're before you tonight with a special permit. And that's the reason for taking down the building is to access and instruct that front portion. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions if you haven't.
Hey. Well, I am gonna. Circle through the board here, Chris Carmichael, well, actually, hang on a second, let me. We do have a couple of pieces of correspondence on this one that I just want to read into the record. We do have a. Letter from the Board of Health dated November third. Board of Health, we received a copy of the petition for hearing of one nineteen Hemlock Shore Road, the plan from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Dated nine twenty-one twenty shows a proposed accessory structure and proposed tight tank on a lot within existing one bedroom residential dwelling. Since the tight tank is an improvement on the existing septic system and the existing dwelling remains unchanged, then the Board of Health has no reason to recommend denial. Due to public health issues at this time, if you have any further questions, please feel free to call us. We have a memo from the planning board at their Thursday, November twelfth, twenty twenty meeting. The planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board had no comments on this petition. Let me just make sure there are no. Additional. Documents, hang on, I know there were some late. Emails for. Additional. Submittals, let me just make sure. We do have a letter from the Conservation Commission in regards to one nineteen Hemlock Shore Road. Commission held a hearing on nine fourteen twenty twenty, a notice of intent was submitted and. Approved for this project, an order of conditions was issued, which included our standard conditions and the following special conditions. Notify agent of pre-construction meeting, review erosion control and siltation barrier, determine if. Barrier is required. And. I believe. That is all the additional comments we have, so having said that. Let's make our rounds here, does anybody on the board have any questions? Start with you, Chris Carmichael. You're muted, Chris.
My apologies, Jamie, what's the neighbor's yard look like adjacent where that three quarter inch setback is? Is there any adjacent structures, houses, what's going on there?
There is actually an adjacent structure there, this over in here is their existing house.
Okay, so it's pretty close?
Oh, yeah, everything is close here, these, these are, these are very small lots, that they're long and roughly fifty feet in width.
So they have more than ten feet?
That I don't know, if they have more than ten feet to the to the abutting property, the abutting law, house.
Yeah, I think I'm looking at a satellite right now and it and it shows it very close and and I'm just concerned about fire jumping from one roof line to another. So I would suggest maybe spinning or twisting the existing shed. So as to pull it a few feet back from the lot line, those are my concerns, other than that, I, you know, I have no problems with granting a variance. I just think a conflagration of roof lines that close together is a problem.
Jamie, is that, is there any possibility or appetite to? Meet that accommodation or?
We have, the the owners are on the line with us, I guess, Janice, can you speak to that?
My only concern would be the access, I'm not sure which way you are proposing to spin that. But we do have a proposed access to the, you know, the existing path. So which way would you propose spinning that?
I think that they're talking about spinning at roughly ninety degrees, am I correct with that, Mr. Carmichael?
Suggest you spinning it more so it's perpendicular to the lot line and then getting that roof line away from the existing structure. Or moving it so it's, you know, forward or back, whatever you have to do to get it away from the your neighbor's roof line.
So could we?
My concern, I understand, I can see the topography behind that shed, so your walkway and and the gradient line. So I can see how it's sloped down. But that would be my suggestion.
Could, could we have?
Join the meeting.
Could we potentially have a, an approval condition to verify that we position at a minimum of ten feet from the adjacent structure?
We, we, obviously, we could do that, does that meet your concern, Chris?
Yeah, I would say, I wouldn't want it any closer than three feet to the lot line. And then that, you know, I'm sure they have a few feet on the other side is what I'm looking at. I think, you know, and then the size of the building doesn't really bother me, I think it's just, again. Fire and the ability of it to to spread, that, those are my concerns.
Okay.
That be amenable to you?
So what what do I understand you to say, to move it three feet from the property line?
That's, that's correct.
So it'd be two feet closer to the path that's present that that we have proposed, or?
We're rotating it so it's more accommodating. So it's not closer to the path, more perpendicular. I I think there's a bunch of different, you could even spin it ninety, a hundred and eighty, ninety degrees. And then accommodate a whole bunch of things at the same time. If you follow what I'm saying, Jamie.
I do.
The X and the Y axis opposite.
Yep.
I guess, I guess the question is, does, how much flexibility do you have to spin it? Is there a particular reason it has to be at that particular angle where obviously that, I guess, depending on how you're looking at it. Front left, or I guess the back right angle is is right there.
Right, so you'd be looking at the gable end from the street. And I'm sure you're used to looking at it from a certain perspective, but I think, I don't think that would affect it. You would still have your additional storage area and I think it would be safer for the neighborhood, that's, that's, those are my concerns.
And the option, the other option would be to move it over three feet from the property line?
Two more feet. You, you want three feet, yeah, we're one foot now, I I think one of the options, and Mr. Carmichael, correct me if I'm wrong. But if we held this corner right here and rotated it towards the roadway. So we were parallel on this side with the property line, that would work for you as well.
Absolutely.
So, so Janice, if we held this back corner and just spun the spun the building so it was parallel. So this would be roughly three feet over here and three feet here, then then Mr. Carmichael would be satisfied.
Yeah, Jamie, I'm actually on the phone.
I'm sorry.
So sorry about that. So what you're saying is they. The law, the length would be parallel to the property line.
No, it would still be the gate, the gable end would be, he would, he would be looking for the end that we're roughly showing a foot off. That side, both, both corners to be roughly three feet off the property line.
You turn the structure, you turn the structure so it would be parallel to the property line as opposed to the front being parallel to the road.
Yep, so it'd be, it'd be close to like a twenty degree turn, Janice.
Okay, but not a complete turn.
No, no, no.
While we're thinking about that, Jerry, do you have any comments or questions?
I have no comments, questions at this time, thanks.
Okay. And could someone just confirm for me, Jeff Youngquist is not on the call, correct, he's not here?
No, I didn't see him on.
Yeah, okay, all right, Nora?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good with echoing Chris's concerns, if they could just move it a little bit so the sides parallel with the property line.
Okay, so the, the gable end is parallel to the property line. Okay, Kathy or, do you have any input?
I I don't, I mean, I don't think it's going to matter that much, Janice, my only question to Jamie would be, this doesn't compromise the. The need for putting in the the tight tank at all.
No.
Okay.
Carolyn?
Yeah, I I I think, I think that's okay. I think that's, I think it's fine, as long as it doesn't compromise the tight tank, I'm good with it.
Nope, it'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
But I, I know Chris C, he's on, he's, he's on one of the hearings. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to alternate as we go forward between the associates, with Jeff is not here. I'm gonna ask Chris Campo to participate in this one, Chris Campo, do you have any questions or concerns about the petition for Jamie? I can't see Chris because Jamie, you're sharing the screen, so I don't know if he's on mute or.
He's on mute.
Okay, sorry about that, yeah, I was actually just attending the planning board meeting, somebody might be a little bit late to this. But I guess the only concerns that came up were more regarding the signage, I think all my concerns have been delayed.
Okay. Chris, you said signage, are you? Not sure you're.
Same meeting.
Okay, he may have been on the planning board, maybe just.
I don't think you can have him voted, he was watching the other meeting.
No, so Chris C, you're voting, you got any questions?
No, no questions, I can see the original thought process was staying within the footprint. But I think spinning it is a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, you're, we want to grant it, you're, you know, there was a pre-existing structure there. But if we can make it a little safer and a little better, we always would prefer to do that.
Yep, no, understood.
Okay, do we have any?
Yeah, John, I'll make a motion that we accept.
Hang on, Chris, 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 hang on, I just think, I don't know if there are any neighbors or abuddies or anyone who has any. Questions or comments? Anybody on Facebook Live want to make a comment, Lakeham?
We have no one on Facebook Live.
All right, Mr. Carmichael, you're up.
I'll make a motion that we accept the the setback of three feet for the accessory structure. To remain parallel to the to the side setback. And with the rest of the size of the structure is fine.
Okay, so with that. With that caveat motion to, you're making a motion to approve the special permit with that caveat, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it, it's Nora.
Okay, Chris Carmichael made the motion, Nora seconded it, do we have any further discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call, vote, Jerry?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yay.
Chris C.
Yeah.
And I vote in favor as well, so the motion passes unanimously. And Kathy, you with us?
This is Janice.
Oh, no, Jen, I think that it's Kathy Murray, right?
Yeah.
Here.
Oh, all right, Kathy, thank God, all right.
We can watch the meeting, John, and get the notes later on, you're okay.
Yeah.
You, you want the spiel there, John?
Be a thing.
All right, we have fourteen days to do the paperwork, it is mailed out after twenty, there's a twenty day appeal period. After that is passed, if there's no appeals, the time clerk can sign off on it. Then you need to record it at the Registry of Deeds and submit the receipt to the building department.
Okay. Good luck, ladies. All right.
Very much.
Thank you very much, have a good night and a nice Thanksgiving.
As well.
You too.
You too.
All right, guys, bear with me, let me get back to. Let's get to the next one. Did I go by it? Okay. Going to open up the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals is opening and acting in accordance with the Mass General laws. Chapter forty eight is amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November nineteenth to hear the petition of Madeline Maxey. For a special permit under six point one, six point, six point three point four, and seven point four. To request, is requested to raise the existing structure and construct a new twenty-six by fifty-seven foot office building. Within the setbacks on a lot that is in the business zone, a special permit is also requested to allow a sign that is forty-one point two five square feet in area. Property site is one ninety-four Bedford Street and is owned by Cedar Berry Holding LLC. Okay, so.
Real quick?
Yes.
One ninety-four Bedford Street, it's actually one four nine.
One four nine, who knew I had dyslexia, how about that?
Dyslexia kills, man.
What's that?
Dyslexia kills.
Yeah, well. All right, so I believe it looks like Zenith has. Submitted information, so I'm assume, I'm assuming Jamie, you're presenting on behalf of the petitioner?
That's correct, I am.
Okay, well, why don't you, why don't you present to us, the good news was, I think most of us listened to a good portion of the planning board hearing. So hopefully, some of our, some of our questions have already been answered, but I'll let you go with it from here and. You're up. The other screen, so feel free, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. And let me pull our plans up. All right, here we go. All right, so tonight, we're in front of you, are requesting special permit for essentially two items, even though there's three sections referenced. The first item that we're looking for a special permit from is to reconstruct a building. That is not meeting the. Like the required setbacks for new construction. There's at one forty-nine Bedford Street, presently, there's a, there's a, a building that is pretty much on the roadway, or very close to it. The applicant is looking to raise the existing structure and construct a new commercial building as shown here. By taking the setbacks from from roughly two to three feet off the property line to fifteen feet plus. As we're showing on here, so that's the first of our requests for a special permit. The second of our requests for the special permit is for a sign. We're looking to to have a sign on site that's roughly nine point two five square feet larger than, than is allowed by right. Also, a special permit. Application was filed for that. And so I'd be happy to kind of go into either one, I believe that we have our sign specialist with us as well. And the applicant is also with us tonight, so. I believe the building's relatively self-explanatory, unless you want me to give you the full rundown on the site design, John?
Yeah, why, why don't you do that if you don't mind, Jamie?
Okay, not a problem at all. Okay, not a problem at all. Um, so we've, we've had our second meeting with the Lakeville Planning Board tonight. Um, the Lakeville Planning Board, uh, seems to be leaning favorably towards, uh, an approval, uh, with the building. Um, and I believe that they've sent you comments on the sign, um, wanting to make sure that you guys look at it from a, a safety, uh, perspective. Um, obviously, they're yielding to you, um, as the, uh, the experts because you're the, the permitting authority for the sign itself. Um, so what we, what we've done here is we presently have a curb cut on Route 79, also known as Rhode Island Road, and we have a, an access off of Bedford Street, uh, right now. We're looking to, um, to close off the access here, um, and actually not use the access over here as well. And move our access down to a much safer spot on Bedford Street, past the guardrail, uh, close to Tamarack, uh, Wine and Spirits. Um, that gives a much longer site distance. It gives better reaction time for people to be able to get in and out and also drivers up and down the road. Um, what this does is this gives us a, a longer, um, entry in, uh, which has a greater expense for site con- uh, construction costs, but it's, it's definitely, uh, moving in the right direction for safety. Uh, zoning by law in Lakeville requires that we have parking spaces, um, for every 300 square feet of building area. Uh, we presently have a little less than 1,500 square feet proposed, um, and we're providing six parking spaces, so we satisfy that requirement. Um, we're also doing, uh, drainage on site, um, so we'll be meeting stormwater management requirement, and we'll be putting in a new uh, septic system, uh, to meet the Board of Health requirement, and we'll be looking to tie into Taunton's municipal water and the roadway. Um, in, in speaking with the fire chief, um, the state fire marshal has a dead end, uh, without a turnaround limit of 150 feet. Uh, and so in this case, when you pull down to the end over here, it's roughly 250 feet. Uh, the fire chief expressed a concern with that since we, we don't have the ability to turn around and back up in this area because of easements on site being, this is a DOT drainage easement, and we just don't have the width overall on site. It was discussed to provide a 15-foot, um, emergency access only that is gated and locked with a, a Knox box padlock. Um, the chief wants, uh, do not enter signs, emergency only signs, and he wants the gate locked and plowed and maintained, um, as conditions. Um, so that gives you a pretty, uh, good rundown overall on the site, um, as far as the layout is concerned. Now, the building itself, um, is going to be an office building. Um, it's, I think one of the primary functions in the building is going to be a real estate office, but there's also going to be, um, type of an advertising business. And the sign out on the front that's being proposed and is part of the packet, special permit, is for a sign, um, that, like I said, is about nine, uh, feet, three, three inch, 9.25 square feet larger than the required, um, than the allowed sign, uh, by right. So the, the sign itself is hand in hand with the business. The, the point of the sign is to have, um, to be able to display, um, whether it's a, a house for sale or something for sale, and then have an eight to roughly 10-second transfer time to the next screen, um, as you see with a lot of, uh, signs. New, a lot of newer signs, and I'm going to scroll down to the, the sign swinging idea. And Madeline, Liam, please feel free to, to chime in if I'm making a mistake, and I, I believe you said your sign guy's here, and he may want to take over on the sign presentation, but, uh, i- is he present? You see him?
Mr. Chairman, before that happens, um, there, there's a question about the relief.
Okay.
So, um, 6.6, 3.4 states unless permitted elsewhere in this bylaw, no sign may exceed 32 square feet in area.
So I don't understand why the application was for a special permit.
It, in 7.4, it, it has the relief in it. So in the 7.4 section, there's a, let me pull it up here.
Because I couldn't find it, and I looked through 7.4, and I, I admittedly, I might have missed it.
Uh, that's okay. I will, can you see this? This is our, this on by level, let me.
I mean, I have 7.4 open. I, I just can't find anything about signs.
Yep.
All right, it's right here. Signs off premises, uh, I'm sorry, signs larger and greater in number than specified. So it's page 53 on 7.4. It's after riding stable and retail business service. Okay, so, so I, I did, I did see that. Um, so what I don't understand is, it says, requires a business to have an unusual requirements or long name, requiring a larger sign.
Yep.
So, so is, what, okay, I, 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 what would those?
I, I, I think the question, uh, Amy's asking, uh, is, is what is the unique circumstance that requires the additional nine-point X amount?
Yeah.
No, that, that's, that, that's a good question. I think it's, one, it's the nature of the business, but also the nature of the sign itself. Um, so on, on the sign itself, what we have is we have the address on top, but the bottom is where the, um, the actual part of the business is going to be, which is the, the advertising of, uh, whether it be properties or other things. Um, this was actually, I believe, and correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Madeline, this was the smallest sign that, that we could get for this purpose, correct? That, that was being offered?
It would. Is that okay? There were two signs offered. Um, the, this one that we chose, um, to have is a better, uh, this, the LED lighting or whatever type of lighting it is, and Bob, if you could step in here, um, it was, it was, made the pictures more clear on this size screen, so that's what we chose to have. We, we can always take out the 149 Bedford Street if, you know, if we have to make it smaller, but I, I don't want to make the digitized sign smaller. I would be happy to take off the top if that would make any sense.
So, so just, um, just to, just so you know, there's, there's two, there's two criteria that you have to show. You have to show an unusual requi- the, the business has unusual requirements or a long name.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it, it, taking off 149 Bedford Street gets rid of nine square feet, then you would be much better off because, or, or if you can prove one of those two, I, I just don't know how, because I, I mean, just having a digital sign doesn't mean that it's an unusual requirement, because I think everyone in town would prefer a digital sign, so that doesn't mean that this one business is different than others. And then I don't know the name, but I don't know if it's long. I'm sorry.
I, I have concerns as well.
Hang on, Chris, but, but, just let me, um, let me, let, but, let's get the full explanation on the sign. I think that, I think Jamie and, and Madeline, you had referenced that we have, um, someone from the sign company there. If, if they're going to make a presentation or they have any comments, uh, potentially they may answer the questions, and then we can, we can kind of go around the horn and, and, and let them know what our thoughts are.
Okay, yeah, I'm here. Bob Messier with, um, Dactronics. I'm with actually the manufacturer. Um, the sign company wasn't able to make it tonight, but I am here to answer any questions or concerns. But what Madeline was saying, I mean, it's a high-resolution digital display that they can advertise on. Couple of points just to make. I mean, Dactronics is a world leader in manufacturing these types of products here in the US. Um, some of the concerns, I do this a lot. I work with a lot of cities and towns with this technology. One of the biggest concerns we see is the brightness at nighttime. Um, all our products use a photo cell that will automatically dim that display down to basically an industry standard of no more than point three foot candles above ambient light, which is far less typically than any street lighting or porch lights on a house. Um, it's very important. It is done automatically. And then it just brightens up during the day, so it kind of goes from 100% to about 4% automatically. And then it's not flashing, animated, scrolling. It's just a static image that changes every, you know, eight to 10 seconds, whatever that hold time is determined to be, which Mass Highway has done numerous studies, did a pilot program many years ago. It actually came up with that 10-second hold time. That is a state um, ordinance where any of the digital displays under this pilot program can only change every 10 seconds, no flashing, no animation, must dim automatically to no more than foot, point three foot candles above ambient light. Display can be, you know, turned off through the software at night, overnight hours. That's to be determined. But I'm here to answer any questions, concerns that you have about the technology of the sign itself. As far as square feet, you're right. I mean, to make up square feet, that would be more Madeline talking with Dave at the sign company to either eliminate that, to reduce that square feet, but typically, it's never bad to have the address there. Even just a 149 would be beneficial.
So just to clarify, sir, um, it sounds like the, the sign that, that your company manufactures, which is obviously the digital portion of it, uh, the, the size that, uh, is being proposed to us is standard or probably the, the minimal size you'd go in order to get the clarity that, that someone would want, correct?
Correct, yeah, to fit that application. I mean, you get, you know, we look at the viewing distance and the tra- the speed of the traffic and the time that they can read and see it clearly without having to struggle to see it.
No, I mean, you, we want them to be able to see it clearly, because it, that presents a problem in that people are going to be turning their heads a little longer, squinting to look at it, and they're not going to be looking at the road, so.
Correct.
Okay, uh, any questions in regards to the signs at this point, and then we'll head back to Jamie. Uh, Chris, I, I think you were going to ask one about the signs, correct?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a, I have a concern with the, that size sign, that close to the road, at a fullway intersection with a light. Seen a lot of accidents at that intersection, and I don't think another, um, distraction is going to help. Yeah, I don't think it's in fitting with the nature of the town and the rural settings, so, uh, I, I can't support that size sign, that lit, that close to the road.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this, this is Nora. I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo, uh, what Chris just said, uh, and I'm, I'm gonna ask if police and fire have reviewed uh, the sign, because that's also my concern, the close proximity to a major road that's getting a major overhaul with 79. Um, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the effect of anything flashing as you come into that intersection.
Okay, uh, quickly, um, I guess back to, um, I, I got a question for Jamie first. I, I, hopefully he has the answer, and then I am also, the follow-up question is to you too, Jamie, because I know, I believe the issue in regards to, uh, fire and police reviewing the project, uh, they did review it for planning board, so if you could comment on that secondly, but my first question is, where this is a state highway, um, does Mass DOT, um, or Mass Highway get involved in far, as far as, um, I mean, is there an aspect where they have to go through Mass, Mass, you know, through the state to get approval for this too?
Well, I, I, the answer is I don't believe that they do. Um, we have permitted, um, well, we've worked on billboards, uh, to permit them. Uh, Mass DOT has its own division for, uh, billboards to be permitted. Um, we do have to permit the curb cut with Mass DOT. Um, and I actually met with Mass DOT, um, and, and had these plans up and showed them this week, uh, but we can't officially file with Mass DOT until we have all local approvals on hand. Um, and yes, you're correct. Fire and police have had these plans reviewed and issued comments to the planning board.
Do, do, could you share those comments? I think Nora's concern is with their, their feelings.
The, the, um, the fire chief wanted to make sure that he had, uh, the, the ability to turn around or exit because of the state fire marshal's 150-foot, uh, dead-end length. And the police chief had, uh, some concerns about the ability of somebody to be able to crash into the building, um, and the surprise that it hasn't happened, uh, with the building that's there now.
But they didn't have any comments about the sign, Jamie?
Not, none that, I was provided with no, I, I received their memos, and there were no comments about the sign.
I'm, I'm wondering, and I know you probably can't answer this, I'm just wondering if they knew it was going to be, uh, not a static sign.
Well, Kathy, you might be able to answer this. They received the, this, uh, application, correct? Also for zoning board?
They, they didn't receive it for zoning board, but they did receive the entire site plan.
Okay.
So I don't know if that info's on there.
Yeah, I, Nora, I can't answer to that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Jamie, do you have any additional information you wanted to present at this point, or before I continue with the rest of the board members to ask questions?
Yeah, the, the only thing that I want to emphasize again is I, I do understand the concern. Um, the, the size difference, um, here between what they get by right and by special permit is a difference of, of nine square feet. Um, it literally is the 149 Bedford Street. It's not even all of it up above. Um, you know, and, and so, uh, all I'm saying is that, um, and, and in the past, the way the zoning board has worked and is with, with signs for special permits, uh, we have them all over town where, you know, if there, if there's a justifiable need, the, the zoning board has, uh, granted the special permit for a larger sign. Understanding that they look at it and they weigh all the, uh, all of the things into consideration, so I do understand, uh, council's, um, comment as well. Um, but that's really about it. I, I can try to answer questions, and so can the team that's here.
Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Elevation of the sign that we can look at it so we, we can see a presentation, what it's going to look like from the street? And I also have a question for Amy. Um, I just went through a, a billboard permitting process in, in a previous town, and state requirements were required. Um, I don't know why this isn't a state road and, and a billboard wouldn't be required to be signed up by them as well. So, I don't know. Amy, could you answer that?
Um, I, I, actually, I can't, um, because it is a state road. I, I would think that they would have to have some kind of input, um, but I, I don't know for sure, Chris, I'm sorry. Um, but I do think that, um, I do think that both your and Nora's, um, concern, you know, perhaps the police and fire should just take a look. You know, to make sure that they're comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Chris. I have a question. I also want to, uh, apologize for my naivete. I thought the meetings were sequential, so I was asking Jamie at the planning board, uh, meeting about this sign when I should have been at this meeting. Uh, so I feel like I should at least ask the same question here for the benefit of the other members. Um, my primary question was what types of businesses were going to be at this location? And it sounds like he had said a real estate-type business and an advertising business. Um, it seems like we're talking about the advertising in relation to the real estate. Um, but as far as the advertising, advertising business goes, is there any intent to advertise other types of businesses or services not related to real estate, and what kind of governs that going forward?
That would be better for you, Madeline.
Yep.
Yes, yes, there is intention.
Yep, that's exactly, that's exactly what the, um, our new business, um, is going to hopefully do. Exposure Marketing Group LLC is the formal name of the business, and Liam Conway and I are going to run, um, we're going to have the ability for advertisements and public bulletins to be displayed on our state-of-the-art sign. And we hope to, you know, offer, you know, um, public messages, you know, vote tonight, um, you know, things like that, of that nature. Um, in addition to other businesses that may want to advertise, um, and be a member of the Exposure Marketing Group um, company. We're offering it as a membership so that they can have some, uh, wall space, um, shared conference room, um, perhaps secretarial offices, um, from my real estate office that they'd be able to share, so they'd be part of, part of this business, and one of their benefits would be to advertise on our sign.
Um, I, I did, I just needed to jump in, Mr. Chairman, really quickly.
Go ahead.
The content of the sign cannot be considered by this board.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, could you clarify that?
You didn't, you didn't say anything wrong, just, um, the, what you put on the sign cannot be considered by the town. So, we cannot regulate.
For discussion.
We cannot regulate content under the First Amendment. We cannot, so, so what they're putting on the sign, I think that they're, I don't think they were telling you what they were putting on the sign. I think they were giving you an overview. And that, I think we should leave it at that, so.
Thank you.
Exactly. Chris, did that, uh, satisfy your question?
Um, I'm still looking for elevation and what it's going to look like.
No, I'm sorry. I meant Chris, Chris Campo. Wrong Chris. No, I'm sorry. I meant Chris, Chris Campo, wrong Chris. I gotta. Yeah, we got three Chris's. Chris Campo, did that did that satisfy your question?
Yes, I did. I just want a confirmation, I guess, and probably Amy that the signs don't have to be in direct relationship to the established business.
And as as far as I know on from your zoning, from your zoning by law, it would appear to me that they do only because. They have, we now have you, if you if you turn the page, you know, onto page fifty four, there's another section for a special permit, which is. Applies to it's signs that are off premises. However, your by law doesn't actually. And state that. You know, advertising for something off premises is not allowed. You know, I guess the the question is, does the sign become a use? Which is, you know, another another, you know, zoning issue here because is that use allowed in this district, you know? It it's complicated, I I guess I would say. But no, the usually when you have an off premises sign, that's when you're actually dealing with billboards and they are put up and they are rented out. You know, so I guess this technically. Could be considered as a small billboard because it's it appears that's what might be happening.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, do you have any? Questions?
A question back out to Jamie. Just I I'm, as I remember it, there's going to be significant construction on Rhode Island Road, right? There's going to be extension of the road and sidewalks put in. Is that true?
I I am told that that is that has been, their funding has been voted on and that I believe the plans are going to be worked on. I did check with. The company that came up with the conceptuals, but. I don't think it had progressed since there the last time I reached out to them. But yes, I do. I do fully anticipate there's going to be work on seventy nine.
Okay, and. I take it none of that was taken into consideration to the designs on the backside?
No.
Okay.
Chris, she, oh, I'm sorry, Jerry, did you have another follow up?
No.
Okay, Chris sheet, any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, um, I would say the proximity to the intersection is a pretty big concern. To have that kind of distraction as you're breaking for. A red light, yellow light, or in some cases speeding up to get through a yellow light. I think that distraction is now twenty eight percent greater than what the town allows. Nine square feet doesn't sound like much, but you do the math on it, it's actually twenty eight percent larger and. It it sounds to me like it's it's a billboard. It's a small mini version of a billboard. And I don't think there'd be much control over what appears on that and that increases. In my opinion, the distraction and I'd actually like to know what the opinion of the fire department and police department on on that might be. Considering that distracted driving is a huge issue and. That seems to compound it.
Jamie, I have a follow up question in regards to the. The the police. Review with of the planning at the planning board, I guess, because I had to leave that meeting early. Would the were the police looking for something to protect the building more or was that some, how did the planning board leave that? Is that something we even need to concern ourselves with?
My my take from the meeting and Barbara Barbara from the planning board is here, I know as a as a citizen, but. If if I'm stating this incorrectly, please speak up. I believe that. The board's opinion right now and it has not been approved is that the. Sliding of the building further back away from the road is. A nice improvement over what is there and there has not been any requirement. We haven't been asked to provide anything. Is the best way for me to put it.
Okay. So let me just kind of stop and and see where we are at this point. Seems it appears that the the board or the vast majority of the board would like to. Receive police and fire comments specifically in regards to the. To the sign or if they have no opinion, that's that that would be their comment. So it may be prudent of us to. To get feedback in regards to safety issues with the sign. I guess the other question is, which I think Chris had asked, Chris Carmichael had asked of Amy. You know, specifically in regards to Mass Highway. What is their role in? I guess telling us because it is a state highway, you know, what is their role and in their authority or oversight on to? The project in general, sightlines and things of that nature or or the sign specifically. So unless I'm wrong, I don't think we know the answer to that, or do we know? Jamie or Amy that, you know, Mass Highway is not going to be involved in this at all.
I don't want I I don't want to speak over Amy. My my experience so far with signs on Bedford Street has not involved any permitting with Mass DOT. I would be, I would, but that being said, I am more than happy to reach out to Mass DOT and confirm that.
That that maybe that may be helpful only in in the sense where I think we're probably. Sounds like we're heading in the direction of potentially coming back and continuing this if if the board's looking for police and fire comment. I'm assuming, Jamie, that should be relatively easy for for you to.
I'm more than happy to talk to all three agencies and and get answers and feedback and and be able to report back to the the zoning board.
Okay.
I would just recommend that when you do talk to Mass DOT, you let them know that it is a. A changing sign that will be advertising businesses that are not onsite.
Absolutely. Nope, not not a problem at all. We wouldn't be looking to sneak anything past them. The other thing that I just want to make sure that everybody is aware is in the zoning regulations as well. The zoning by law gives the building inspector and I believe it's the police chief, the ability to shut the sign down if it is a danger. Being whether they feel that it's changing too fast or it's too bright or even the content. From my understanding and and Amy may disagree with the content, I'm not sure, but. But they the by law allows them the ability to have the sign shut down. So that that's an important thing. If they do deem it to be a danger, that was talked about at the planning board meeting as well.
There are certain, there is certain content that they can regulate, but. Obviously, it's what what we would think you shouldn't put on signs, so.
Understood.
If Mr. Chairman is Nora again, I just have a question. When we're talking about the hearing and it's asking for a special re. Permit under six point one, six point six point three point four, shouldn't it also be under six point six point two, which talks about the general sign? Prohibits, signs of any moves, flashes, animated signing and the illumination as to create a traffic hazard. If we were to after the police and fire have reviewed this, wouldn't we be giving it a special permit against six point six point two? Point one and point two.
You'd have you'd have to give a variance.
Right.
There's no relief from that.
And and Mr. Chairman, if I may, our our intention isn't that this is a flashing, moving or dangerous sign. In in that aspect.
Yeah, but my recollection is correct. I believe earlier when you when you presented or or it was the gentleman with the sign manufacturer. It's it's a it's a digital sign, but it's stagnant for eight to ten seconds or whatever we decide to. If we put conditions on it, it's there and then it just it changes. It's not going to be flashing, moving or anything like that, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, most most zoning by laws have not kept up with sign technology. And so. So this is a sign. You know, for example, a lot of fire departments have the sign, you know, out front that says, you know, hazardous waste day and and, you know, vote like Jamie said, but. They they don't necessarily create a glare. And and that's that appears to be what six point six point two point two. Is concerned about is glare. I think.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about that being so close to that intersection as it exists today and with the improvements. And I put that in air quotes that they're making to seventy nine and then as a result, that intersection. Is this an impediment to that?
Understood. All right, well, I mean, if it's if it's amenable to the to the board, I'd like to like to be able to get some of these answers and report back. You know, if if the fire or police chiefs have issues with it, then we would be looking to address them. And also if Mass DOT has a permitting requirement for this, then we need to make sure we're in compliance with.
Yeah, that I think that'd be helpful and 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 benefit the cause for the petitioner. Do we have anyone on the call, Butters or? Anyone who is looking to make a comment? Hang on, Chris, I just since I already announced that. Or anyone on Facebook that's looking to make a comment like him?
Oh, we had one comment. I put it in the chat. It's from Ed Kaz, asking, does the Tomerac next door have a flashing sign?
I drive by it way too many times that I I'm honestly embarrassed to say I don't know if it has a flashing sign. I'm not sure.
It it has something similar to what the old Sados has had, which is just one line. That sends a message across, I believe. I believe that's what's at the Tamarack is the same thing that's at the. Down at the Plaza.
Yeah, but it's not fifty square feet, so.
No, it's not fifty square feet. No, it is not. You're right, Chris.
Chris, you had a question, Carmichael?
If we're going to come back to this, if we're going to continue it, I would request some kind of an elevation. Especially from the intersection or from both angles so that we can see what the sign is going to look like. And then know how many illuminators it's going to have. And I'd like to see the written comments, not just a quote from the fire department. I'd like to see their their comments in writing so that we can weigh all those in.
That easy enough to to get, Jamie?
Um, if if we're looking to definitely get them in writing, it might be best coming from the zoning board of appeals itself.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant I meant the elevation with.
Oh, the elevation, as long as my client okay's it, we can we can work on that, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, and and we'll take care of getting the comments from the police, police and fire.
Thank you.
John, this is Barbara Minkowski. I'm showing up as a resident today.
Hello, Barbara. Just announce her address for the record.
Seventeen Johnson Drive.
Thank you.
All right, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, for the twenty years that I've lived here, I've been reviewing the resident surveys, which everyone has an opportunity to. Complete when they do. I think it's the census. At the beginning of the year and one of the things that I've noticed about the community is we want to very consistently. They look, they seek for us to maintain the rural character of the community, so I would just ask us to keep that in mind. As we think about whether it's this plan or anything else, our community is undergoing tremendous change. And that is one thing that the community definitely seeks for us to to accomplish in planning is maintaining the rural character of our community, so. It's my two cents.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from anyone? On the call?
Madeline, you you're gonna have to speak up if if you want.
Oh, I I didn't know if I should interrupt. Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Madeline.
I was just in in listening to what Barbara has to say. I can appreciate that, but I also. Was under the impression that the master plan for the town wants to grow business.
Well, I would agree with it, you know, a business in a business district is absolutely what this town is looking for. But a digital billboard illuminating at a full way intersection might not just be the right location or the right place for that. So we encourage business and I would be all for it. I'm all for this business and a business district, but I don't think that sign is in the right location.
And do you, may I ask another question, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
If Jamie were to discuss with me after the meeting and we were to look at the length of. Our frontage on Bedford Bedford Street and there was perhaps another location for it. Along the way before the entrance. Is that something that would? You know, be pleasing to the board? Or are they just?
But again, I'd like to see an elevation, so we don't even know what we're looking at right now. So an elevation is really what we need to see in a site plan where it's going to be located. We don't have that.
Actual height of the sign you're referring to?
Can we see it?
Yeah, I believe it's on the plans.
I haven't seen any of it.
Share his screen. There's a an elevation and dimensions of the sign.
Yeah, Jamie, if you bring that map up, yeah, I think it shows where the placement of the sign is. I was gonna.
Absolutely.
It has an example of an ad that would be shown as well.
So this this is, and let me zoom out just a little. This is the color version of what the sign is to look like. And site plan itself. We're proposing the sign placement. Right here at the right would what would be Mr. Carmichael in the existing driveway.
So right in the intersection?
Ah, it it is.
In ten or twenty feet, right?
No, it's well, it's greater than twenty feet to because this is fifteen right here. We're probably forty, may maybe forty five.
I'm pretty sure in most bylaws that it requires that any illuminated sign is not near any street light as to cause interference. This is going to cause interference with the streetlights. It's going to cause interference with sightlines. I would strongly recommend that you propose moving that to the bottom end of the property as far away from the intersection as possible. And possibly reducing it in size and scope.
Okay, so why don't we do this at this point? We're gonna, Jamie's gonna do his due diligence and and find out from Mass Highway. What their involvement is, if any, in in this process. When you do come back, if you could give us potentially some other options as to sign placement. And the zoning board itself will reach out to fire and police to get their their comments on it. To Chris Carmichael's point, you know, I think they're probably going to be in the best position to talk about. Maybe police, obviously more so than fire, you know, the safety concerns with with the sign and the proximity to the to the intersection.
Sure, and as far as as far as the elevations are concerned, Mr. Carmichael, did that what we showed was that adequate?
What I'm looking for, Jamie, is a an elevation of the site and hole or some kind of three D rendering so that we can.
I think what he wants to see, Jamie, is if he's coming down eighteen, what's it going to look like?
And that's what I. Something that's that was what I was looking to confirm. I just I didn't want to leave the meeting and and not be positive of that.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the concerns of your board, which I, you know, I'm thankful for this venue for us to discuss it. It sounds as though it's safety. Would I be correct in saying that?
Uh, I mean, I. My board, but it sounds like that's, I think there's two concerns. I think one concern is obviously safety and placement of a sign with the intersection and whatnot. And and my inclination is there there is a concern, some probably to varying degrees about the. Keeping the rural characteristics of the of of Lakeville. Again, I'm just, I'm I'm interpreting the comments that I've heard tonight, so.
Okay, understood. I was just wondering that if it is a safety thing and we get. Thumbs up, let's say, from the police department and the fire department, that it is not a safety issue. What, how do we proceed with your board from from then?
Well, the the only problem with asking that question at this point is that you're we. You're you're pushing us to the point of a vote and I don't think you want to. It's my recommendation, don't want to do that at this point.
I don't want to do that at this point. I just want to know if that. If how does how does the board? Go with or against the police if they are okay with it?
I think it's just one of the things that we all take into consideration. I think it's just one of the things that we all take into consideration. That's one of the things that I'm looking to take into consideration as we look at the whole package and what you're asking us to, to do as it relates to a special permit. That's just one piece that's missing.
So if we were to receive perhaps thumbs up from the police department, do you feel as though you'd be more inclined?
Madeline, 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 I, I apologize. I'm gonna have to cut you off because I, I can't have you asking what the board members' position is. If they, we get a positive or a negative, you know, are you guys all set? It's, it's, you know, you, trust me, you don't want us to, you don't want to go down that road for our sake and ultimately for your benefit. Amy, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, you are 100% correct.
Yes, I can see, I can see my counsel getting nervous, so. I don't, I don't want to get any of us in hot water yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no problem. I, 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 I feel your, your, your desire to get an answer, but I just don't want to get anyone into a position we don't want to be in, so.
I, I think what, I think the best plan of action is, is exactly like you said, we will, you guys can reach out to fire and police. We will also be talking to them in case we need to make any changes. I'm going to talk to my client about elevations on the roadway to be able to show what this will look like so the, the board will have a better understanding. And then I will talk with Madeline and Liam about alternative sign placements if, if that needs to be addressed as well.
Great.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your time tonight.
No, thank you. Thank you both for, all three of you for, for attending. I'm going to ask at this point if someone would make a motion to, Jamie, I'm assuming you're confident that you'll be able to take care of your homework before the next, before our meeting in December?
Yeah, I'm pretty, well, what is, we're gonna have a meeting the week before Christmas?
Oh, I'm not, Kathy, when are we, when are we meeting next?
I was going to ask you that because on that date, there's supposed to be a public hearing for the hospital. So I think, now I'd have to check my papers, which I everywhere. So that's something I wanted to ask if you wanted to maintain the same schedule third Thursday? Or if board members wanted the opportunity to go to those hearings and change the date for ZBAs to, you know, possibly Tuesday or Wednesday for those months?
I'm gonna go out on a limb and assume that at least a couple of our board members are gonna attend that, that, that hearing, so. Yeah, do we need to, we don't need to specify, do we need to specify an exact date, Amy?
Yes, you do.
And we can, okay.
Yeah, and I will be at that. I, I won't, I'll be at the other hearing on the 16th, so.
Well, I, I apologize for doing a little housekeeping here on, on, on the meeting, but do we have anything else that's come in for December at this point, Kathy? That you know of, you can think of, that we're gonna need to have a hearing for? Yes, we.
Wait, Kathy, pardon me, but I thought that the, I thought that the hospital meeting was on the 16th.
I, I thought I got one that has it on, all on Thursdays.
Let me.
Let me check too.
The most recent. I just got an agenda. Oh, that's for the third. So you're right. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The planning board, I think, is meeting on the 16th on that. Would that make sense? I'm sorry, I'm doing this, Mr. Chairman. So the first hearing is on a Thursday, so Kathy, you're probably correct.
Okay. Oh, having said that, we do have, well, here's the problem. We have Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Not that anyone's going to be able to congregate, but I'm pretty sure no one's going to show up to a meeting on either of those dates. So Kathy, do we have enough, are we good if we bump up our meeting to the 10th on December?
I have a planning board on second, on fourth. Can you do, can members do any other day besides the Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't want to get into a polling, not, I mean, I, into everyone coordinating schedules. Now, Amy, is, what's, what's, help me out here. What's my option to be able to continue this and and, and figure out the dates scheduling wise just because of the holiday? Or do I have any, or do we have to literally go through schedules and do it now?
You have no option. If you want to continue this, you have to continue it to a time and date certain, unfortunately, Mr. Chairman. And that's in the statute. That's under section 11. That's also in the open meeting law, so.
Didn't fake away, fake it and think away from that too?
There's no way around it. I can't do it. I can't get away, can't get you around it.
Sorry, that was my poor attempt at humor, I guess. Can people, can folks do Tuesdays?
Like, we do Tuesday, the 15th, John?
Everybody else good with that or Ca- Kathy?
Yeah. Are we talking the same time, John?
Yeah, I mean, if that works for everybody, I mean, I, I'm flexible on that date.
Yeah, I, I can do it on Tuesday as long as it's the same time. I'm tied up with West Coast stuff prior to that time.
No, that's fine. Kathy, are you available? Is the Tuesday, the 15th work for you? I don't know, is Kathy muted? Kathy, there you go. Are you, yes, so good. Yep.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so, all right, I'll entertain a motion to continue the maxi hearing till Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday, December 15th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we continue that, I have one question. On the agenda, it says that we're going to be talking about the building and the sign. Are we continuing both of those hearings? Or did we open one or both? Or is this, are we just talking about a sign? Are we talking about a building?
Well, we're talking about both. It's the one application, so we're talking.
Application for both. All right, so are we gonna hear what, what they have to say about the building later on, or you want to just continue the whole thing until then?
Well, did anybody have any questions about the building? I, I, I assumed folks after Jamie finished his portion. I'd, I'd rather have the questions now, so if we need them to gather additional information.
Yeah, I have questions about the proximity to the road.
Ask away. Jamie, Jamie, you're still here, right?
I'm here.
Go ahead, Chris.
Jamie, that's a challenging site to work with and I commend you for putting all that together. But I don't know that we couldn't slide the whole thing down towards the Tamarack liquor store and get that whole building away from the intersection. And then maybe that would solve the fire department's 150 feet and we could slide that even further back from the road. Just my thoughts.
No, I understand. So, and, and if I can, I can, I can try to address a couple of those issues. We did look at that. We have, and actually, this probably, I was using this for the dimensions, but I'm gonna go to the grading plan. I think it shows things a little bit better. In this area right here, Mr. Carmichael, we have an existing Mass DOT drainage easement. And we're placing our detention basin over in here. Infiltration basin for drainage. And we have our entrance here for the safety component. So keeping our utility for our septic outside of the, the existing easement, also out of the 100-foot setback from this existing well that's on the abutting property. And trying to stay out of the buffer zones to the resource the best we can to be in compliance for conservation. We're kind of pushed into, into this layout and it, and it changed a little bit also with the, the fire department asking for their emergency access help.
Right, and I'm all about the fire department's safety. I was on the department for 10 years. And my comments would be that in an emergency situation, they're gonna pull up right into the middle of the intersection and lay hoes.
Absolutely. I completely agree.
This whole thing about a turnaround, and I'm all about the fire department, trust me. But I think also sightlines need to be considered. And then queues from traffic. And that, that proximity, I, I understand that the existing residential structure is even closer, and this is an improvement. But I think a two-story, is this a two-story building, Jamie?
It is.
Right, so a two-story building is gonna create a horrible sightline at that intersection. So I think it, the farthest that we can get that from the road or further back, even feet or inches is gonna help us. So those are my concerns. And again, I'm all for a business in a business district and I'm all, all for this project, but I, I just hope we're designing it the best that we can.
Sure, no, I understand. Yeah, we. Go ahead, Madeline.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I address Jamie?
Yes.
Jamie, I, I don't know if this would make any difference in helping the situation, but I know that Skip Bird, who lives in the abutting property, would love to tie into the town water. So if he were to get rid of that well, I know that you're, you're dealing with distances from his well. Would that make any difference at all?
Might change the placement of the septic so we can slide the, the building.
Okay, well, if, if you want, Skip was gonna be on this call tonight, but I don't, I don't see him here, but he would be, I believe, amenable to, to discussing that.
Okay. Well, Mr. Carmichael, we'll look at some alternatives because that's news to me.
That's great. And, and again, I'm all for the project. I just think, you know, I, I'm just looking for the best possible solutions to everything. That's all.
No, I, I, I believe that, so.
Thank you.
Uh, just to make sure we didn't miss anyone, did anyone else have any particular questions in regards to the, to the structure itself, to the, to the building, since we got so focused on the signs before we continue? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing till December 15th.
Oh, moved.
Nora, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Jerry?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
And I'm gonna have Chris Campo, since Jeff is not here, vote on this one.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we are continued to the 15th. Thank you for your time, folks, and we'll see you back in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Okay. Onto our next hearing. Okay, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November 19th to hear the petition of Chris Chapin, a chap, and I apologize, Chapin, Chris Chapin. A special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4 is requested to construct a second story addition to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot. 24 by 24 foot garage that would be within the setbacks is also proposed. The property site is 15 South Avenue and is owned by, I'll let you, if you can read it.
Nine Lion.
Nine Lion, Nine Lion Incorporated.
A little tricky.
So who is presenting? Chris, you?
I, I believe Jamie will also be presenting. He may need a little drink of water here because he seems to be busy tonight.
It's been a busy night.
Jamie, take some money tonight. Good for you.
There we go.
All right.
Ready, Jamie? Go right ahead. Share the screen. You don't even need to ask.
I am. For, for everybody who has not heard my name tonight, I'm Jamie Bissman at UniNap Consulting Engineers. And I'm going to share the screen as I've been told I can do. What you have before you is the, the raising and reconstruction of a existing dwelling and the construction of a new accessory structure, being a garage on a slab. Both being a special permit. And hence the reason that the special permit has been filed with you. This is on Long Pond in Clark Shores. So the, the, the system has a relatively new tight tank. We're not going to be changing bedrooms. It's connected into the seasonal water system. And I believe, Chris, you've already been through conservation on this?
Yes, but we had, I got continued because we needed a little bit more information as far as we relocated the structure, the secondary structure a little bit because of we were within setbacks and it didn't necessarily work as well. So we tweaked that pre-meeting. So I've resubmitted that. That's what you had taken care of, Jamie. That's what we're looking at here on the screen. And the existing building, we aren't taking that down or raising that, if you will. We are adding a second floor to that structure via the submittal that everybody has plans in hand.
Okay. And did, did, did we provide them with any architecturals or anything?
Correct. They, those are all in hand and were submitted, yes.
All right. So I believe between Chris and I, we can probably answer any questions. It was kind of a joint effort. I believe Chris filled out the special permit application. We did the site plan, so I might not have all the answers for you tonight.
So Jamie, just to confirm, we're keeping the existing two-bedroom in the same footprint. We're just adding a second floor. And then we're adding a two-car garage with 10-foot setbacks on, on two sides. Is that my understanding?
We're gonna have 20-foot setbacks on, on the sides.
Okay, I'm looking at the wrong site plan then.
We had an update to that, correct?
Oh, thank you. Okay. So it's 20 foot. Even better.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. I have no objections.
Sounds like you're here just because of the size of the lot, correct, Jamie?
It's also because we don't meet the front setback for an accessory structure, Mr. Chair. The front is a 40-foot typical setback. The zoning allows, under a special permit, a reduction to 20.
You are correct. I'm looking at it upside down, but then again, I read the wrong number earlier too, so. Jerry, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see. Nora?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
And I'm going to bounce back to Chris Sheedy to vote on this one. So comments, questions, Chris?
I'm good as well.
Okay. Chris Campo, even though you're not voting, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the public or any butters that want to comment or have questions, or is there anyone on Facebook, Lake Cam, that's chiming in?
I don't have anyone on Facebook.
Okay. Well, that being the case, if someone is ready and willing, I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the submittal as submitted.
Okay, we have motion to approve the special permit as submitted. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Jerry seconded. Any discussion? Further discussion, I should say. All right, we're gonna call the roll call. Jerry?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Chris Sheedy?
Yay.
And I am in favor. So motion carries unanimously. Kathy will give you the rundown, sir.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Now I can.
Okay, I think I got a shout over here. All right, we, we have 14 days to do the paperwork and file it with the town clerk. After 20 days, if there's no appeals, she will sign it. And then you can take it and record it at the Registry of Deeds and submit the receipt to the building department when you go for your building permit.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
All right. Okay, let's go back to the top of the agenda and we are going to re-open the Matoska hearing. And hopefully, I think where we left off was you had some correspondence that you received this morning from, excuse me, Outback Engineering. And just to bring Kathy up to speed, you were still at the planning board meeting, I believe, in the Matoska. Matoskas had relayed that, I believe, today at some point, I guess a little earlier, they had brought in some correspondence from Outback Engineering. Did you receive that or get that or?
I didn't get anything in hand. I received three parts of a presentation.
Okay, okay, and we did, we did get that, so.
If it was within that.
Yeah, for some reason, the Mark Matoska, I believe, thought that, that they, that it was there. Wasn't that the case, Mr. and Mrs.?
It was.
Did you drop it off yourself or did somebody else drop it off?
I thought Outback emailed it. I thought Outback emailed it to Kathy, but apparently he didn't. So I just during this meeting, after you continued me, I did email to Kathy to have a copy for your record, but I can show you it on the screen.
Yeah, okay, why don't you share the screen and and we'll start from there and then move forward.
This this is a copy of the letter, but I think the the key paragraph is the second paragraph is gonna be the one of interest to you.
Oh, hang on. Is it me or I can't see anything? Has anyone else seen anything?
Did you screen one?
I did.
Go back to the thing.
Can you see it?
No. Kathy, do you have it on your email now?
I'm looking.
Oh, hang on. We have it. It 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 just got shared.
And so here's a copy, a copy of the letter. Uh, which Kathy will get an email, which she gets a chance to see it. Uh, but the the key thing is 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 the second paragraph.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mark, uh, do me a favor. Can you just uh just sit tight for uh a minute or two? Uh, can everyone on the board see this and able to read it?
Yes.
I just wanna have the time to read it.
Yep, no, that's I will, I will uh. We'll wait for everyone to finish. Have we all had a chance to finish it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um. Before I ask you to comment on this, um, I I guess I'll I'm gonna ask for comments from board members. Um, and I will give you a chance to to respond, uh, Mr. and Mrs. uh Ratuska. Um. Are we comfortable with this letter? Uh, sure, that we're that we're confident that the uh. Water mitigation issue has been satisfied potentially? Not that it's dealing with you dealing with, but I mean, I'll I'll ask for anyone's uh response. Doesn't matter.
Hey, John, it's it's Nora. I I guess, surfacely, it appears, I guess I I would like to see some. Numbers behind this as to what it actually is capable of managing. And only from the standpoint, and I'm gonna apologize to the the abutters, but when we had the horrific rainstorm about uh ten days ago. If you saw somebody running around in a yellow uh. Rain jacket, that was me, looking at how the water ran off and 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 where it runs to. Uh, and I I just need an understanding of what of of some quantification of this and how much it handles.
Yeah, I mean, my concern with this letter honestly is is they refer to, you know, to mitigate um and, you know. Mitigate isn't, in my opinion, a definitive word. I I I think we need something that's gonna say, listen, this is going to make sure there is going to be no. Um, you know, whether it's presented by them, uh, that being Outback, or it's a little bit more of a detailed plan. But I guess we wanna make sure that, you know, obviously there are water issues in that neighborhood anyway. We wanna make sure that they're not gonna change um. With the, you know, the scope of of the project and what you guys are looking to do to that property.
I think if we could get Outback, who I'm assuming is designing the designing the drainage system. Um, to kind of explain this to us would be helpful. Because I'll be the first one to admit I don't know that much about this.
I can I can agree that uh. What Nora's concerns are, and then also I'd like to see a site plan where it's sitting. Uh, I think we requested it at the beginning of the hearing.
Yeah, we have that. We were first showing you the letter and we're ready to show you the site plan if you'd like that right at this point.
And you you have it files.
Okay, here we go. Can you see it?
Thank you.
Yep.
And if you I move it over to here, you can also see the system itself. I can blow that up if you need it here.
Nope, no, just the site.
No, okay, get, let me go back.
Chris, you've seen a lot more. Chris Carmichael, you've seen a lot more of these than I have, so I'm gonna defer to you with uh.
Yeah, if I could have the applicant slide so we can see the bottom of it, because a part of that is cut off, so we can see the neighbor's property as well. Thank you very much. So what you're proposing is a ten-foot setback on one side and a seventeen-foot setback on the other side. So that's you've moved the structure. Is that my understanding?
Well, the the bylaws calls for twenty feet, so.
Right, but did you move it further back from the last conversation?
No.
No?
No, Chris, it's in the exact same spot.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Amy. Um. I again, I still have the same concerns about the size of that structure and that close. Um, I'd really like to hear from the neighbors. As well, and what their thoughts.
I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in for a second here, Chris, only because I I again, unless I'm, my memory is is failing me, which hopefully it isn't. Um. I I believe we had, you know, you have the room to move it, um, obviously, and and it's your decision whether you wanna move it or not. Uh, but I I thought we had left last time with potentially seeing if you could do anything to shift it a little further away. Uh, but I believe earlier, before we continued the meeting. Um, I think you had relayed that, listen, you want this size garage and. You're not gonna move it because you like where it sits, and and I'm paraphrasing. Um, is that? Is that my understanding that um this is this is really where you want it and you have no interest in in moving it or sliding it? And you want it this size and have no interest in 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 shrinking it a little bit in order as an offset to get a little closer to the. To the um.
When I hear, when I hear the word shrinkers, I keep hearing shrinkers to a two-car garage. That will not work. You know, I've got preliminary drawings for a nice design. You know, if I were to shave off, let's say, from forty-four feet to forty-three, for example, something that might be could be considered. Uh, but to make it a two-car garage, that that would not do it. Like I said. My worst-case scenario is to put it twenty feet from the sideline and forty feet from the street. Now, you know, this, I think, is the ideal location. Uh, if the if the board uh felt ten feet was too close, they wanted twelve feet instead of ten. Yeah, anything but anything less than twenty, if you if you give me that number, I would adjust the drawing for that number. But if if it's a matter of I can't be less than twenty feet without making a change to the garage. Then I move the garage into the twenty feet and my neighbors will get that garage the way it is, and they won't get all that mitigation that I'm offering.
May I interject for a second?
Go right ahead, Chris, please.
Well, I I've been looking at the the site plan quite a bit and uh I don't understand why. It can't be pivoted. Approximate numbers here, but if you pivot that garage fifteen degrees and then slide it in a northerly direction. You you're gonna you're gonna get right to that twenty-foot setback, and this whole discussion becomes moot. Um, and. But uh part part of your slide presentation uh referenced the uh special permit. And you were citing seven point four point one point three. Which states the applicant has no reasonable alternative available. And I don't see that. I I see you have an option to either reduce the size of the structure, which you don't wanna do, and that's fine. But you do have an option of just pivot that garage. Slide it, slide it forward, and you've got the garage you want. Your neighbors don't have a forty-foot by, I don't even know what the height is on that. Is it two stories high plus the roof?
It's the it's the first floor with a hip roof, but because of the lot size and the length. And there's a bylaws way to find a second floor, like my attic on my house, I went on a two-story house. But the attic, by the definition of of a of a floor, would be considered a third floor, although the town recognized it as a two-story house.
Do you do you know what the dimension from the ground to the fascia would be? The ground to the gutter?
Well, I'm putting uh, I was planning on eight-foot tall garage doors, then you need the clearance for the uh. You know, the automatic mechanism for the automatic doors, so as I can add a foot and a half roughly for the ceiling. So, you know, I'm gonna estimate ten feet off the ground for the for the fascia.
Yeah.
On the main part of the house, but I will put some actual details that will change that and it won't be three sixty. Fascial at ten feet, but on, you know, there will be a fascia on at least three sides like that.
Okay, so I I I guess what I'm saying is I'm I'm struggling with with the fact that. You're choosing. A location that benefits. Your aesthetic. Desire. And the neighbor is suffering the consequences with a building ten feet from their property.
Chris, let me let me interrupt you for a second. Excuse me.
Okay.
Get right to the point here. I think what we're all maybe, you know, dancing around a little bit is, you know, why do you need this relief? Why does why does the petitioner need the relief? I mean, normally, folks who are looking to come in and get closer. Um, because there's no other place to put it. There's, you know, there's a there's a structure there. There's, you know, the well is already there, like we were talking about in the prior. Hearing, um, I I'm I'm curious as to why do you need this relief? And and is it strictly because it's your preference to have it over there because you wanna have more open space in the middle of the property? Or or what what's the real reason for the relief that you need?
Ob- obviously, the primary benefit to me, I think you were discussing aesthetically, open space, but it also goes into the driveway. Now, as far as uh, you know.
Can you explain that to me? What do you mean it goes into the driveway?
You know, to have, because there's all these different slopes in my yard. Like, for example, I set up that turnaround, I I I I already have certain slopes going down the south side of my property between the house and the Traboo property. And one of one of the Traboo uh concerns was saying my turnaround would have the water run down a steep slope. I set the driveway up to have enough room to park cars outside the garage with enough pull into the garage and still have a a chance to have a place to turn around on what could be a relatively flat area. Right? As I move it into the, as I move it further in, I'm running out of space and I'm 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 now prodding on that. So you can you call it aesthetics, but I'm prodding into the house and having less and less distance. And aesthetically, if my yard looks bad, to me, that lowers the value of me, which I think hurts the neighbors to a certain degree. But the other part I'm trying to accomplish with that with the angles I mentioned at the meeting is. You have to picture the house across the street has a water view. This is gonna block part of the water view between, you know, obviously, this garage is between my house and the Traboo property. If I turn it clockwise and go parallel to the property line, I'm blocking off more view. If I slide it further, you know, towards the lake, it's the same thing. I'm getting closer to the house. I'm making a bigger barrier across the way. So to me to accomplish what I want for my yard and the other thing to accomplish. You know, to make, I think, a better for my neighbors, which I say, if I'm questioning from the view and whether or not the taboos agree with my opinion. You know, you gotta picture their house. Their house is a lot closer to the water. So if you look at the at the the furthest east corner of my house. You know, you have to go down past that bend in the property line, towards the lake a bit, get to that to their their front door. If I turn the thing clockwise and propel it to the property line, they come out their front door, they're gonna see the forty-foot, forty-four-foot length of the garage as a primary focus. But me tilting it towards them, they get to see the focus coming more on the width of the garage, which to me is is less obnoxious. And if I go to twenty feet, I'm gonna not make it any less than, I'm not gonna make it any more than twenty feet. So I will be parallel to a puppy line at that point. So I won't accomplish what I'm trying to accomplish with my neighbor. You know, I mean, I'm not denying them the primary beneficiary of this. I mean, I can't deny that part of it. But part of my goal was to make things better for everybody else. And I was I was willing to pay for all these mitigating steps I offered. You know, and, you know, and to expect me to get rid of all the water is a separate issue that will go through a little while. But I think, you know, it just makes better use of the yard. I think it's better for everybody. And I don't wanna, you know, if I go further to the right, I don't wanna have a problem later on. If I have to remove uh rebuild my leaching field, for example, because I was one of the comments and help board that that symptom hasn't been tested for many years. Basically, build that, I need to land that way too. So I I don't wanna make my things worse and worse. So once again, if I could have this, that's my ideal. If I can have something less than this, I'll go for that as well. If I have twenty feet and you're only giving me relief on the on the distance from the road, I appreciate that. Of course, I can't go any closer. Unlimited by the well going towards the street.
All right, let me uh, I'm gonna ask for comments from the neighbors since uh it it seems to come up that there's a benefit for the neighbors here um that we keep hearing. But before I do that, um, are there any additional questions in regards to the garage and its placement right now from the uh? From the from my board members?
Yeah, John, I have something.
Go ahead, Chris.
So I just I just wanna respond to a couple of Mr. Mark Kowski's comments um that. If he was just gonna build this garage and he was gonna push it further inland, he wouldn't have to address the water drainage. He absolutely does. It's against the law for him to divert any water from his property onto anybody else's, first and foremost. And not that I wanna discuss building codes, but he's also required to do drainage around his foundation. So that includes the downspouts. So he needs to include those in any construction that he's gonna be doing. That needs to be part of this conversation. So he has, he has to address the water runoff regardless.
No, I I I, Chris, Chris, yeah, just to echo, yeah, Chris is absolutely right. A lot of what the mitigation he's referring to is is unnecessarily mitigation. He's gonna have to, he's gonna have to deal with it anyways.
I'll have to address it no matter what.
Yeah. Um. Any any additional questions? If not, I'm gonna ask for comments from from the neighbors. Obviously, they're they're the ones who are most impacted by this. All right, could you uh do me a favor? Could you unshare the um document, please? Okay. All right, uh. Let's see, I may look for Lake Cam to help me out here. Who who from uh the public or neighbor-wise wants to comment a question, if anyone?
We had someone on Facebook, Kevin Hirth. Um, I posted his comment in the chat. Um, but I can read them off for you if you want.
Uh, like, hang on, let me see if I can. Oh, we got a whole bunch of stuff here. Um. Let's see, Kevin Hirth would like to see where where is located on property, the drainage system. Obviously, we've discussed that. Garage is not twenty feet off the property line. We discussed that. Move over to the neighbor, needs to meet setbacks. Okay, Mr. Hirth is is made comments on everything we've we've uh we've brought to light at this point. So any of the neighbors wanted uh comment that are on the Zoom call? For or against?
Yes, we would. Uh, this is Mary and Bill Traboo.
Okay, go right ahead, Mr. and Mrs. Traboo.
Are you just uh talking about the garage right now?
Right now, we're focusing on the garage.
Okay. Uh, we signed, as one of them in the last meeting, in good faith, the settlement agreement. And in that settlement agreement, we never expected the garage to be bigger than twenty-four by twenty-eight. So and they do have other options, so I don't understand, again, why they're pursuing this from that point of view. Um, also, it relates kind of to the garage, I guess, is in the last meeting, we talked about the structures. Excuse me, structures, parking and paved areas, that it wasn't within the twenty-five percent. I see on the new plan, it's at twenty-four point nine percent. I would like to have somebody from Outback say, how would how did that happen? What happened from the prior plan that all of a sudden it dropped down? And I would also like to know what exactly makes up that number. And it says structures, parking and paved areas. It doesn't say impervious area. So. It was talk about the gravel area not being pervious. I don't understand. I'd like to have somebody explain that to me too. Those are comments generally about the garage.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, there. I, I'm gonna hold my comments on your comments. I wanna hear if other neighbors have um any uh.
Hold up, my wife has something.
Oh, go right ahead, Mary.
Hi, I I didn't know how much we wanted to get into this whole size and name.
I didn't know how much we wanted to get into this whole size and neighborhood. I know we did the, um. PowerPoint presentation. I submitted some information regarding the neighborhood as well with pictures and so forth.
Yeah.
I don't know how involved you want me to get on that.
Mary, you know what? If if you want to state for the record whether, you know, you think it is in character, it isn't in character and 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 we'll leave it at that. We honestly, I think at this point, the board doesn't need to see any more pictures or hear about every single. Property or I I again, as I mentioned earlier. That is, that's a little. That's not that primary focus at this point.
Well, I don't think it is in keeping with the neighborhood. There would be only one structure and that's a horse barn. Uh, that would be larger than. What he is requesting and it's on a four point six or eight acre lot. So it isn't in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood. Also. Okay. Lost my train of thought. I don't know if we want to get into the turnaround and and those small, small but important issues. The fact that they addressed the stormwater, the drainage, we're all for that. It's great, couldn't be happier, but as far as the positioning of the garage. To to be in our benefit, we see no benefit whatsoever. In fact. Because of the look, because of the dimensions of that lot and the strange configuration. If you're looking out. Any of their windows, they're not. They're receiving all of the benefit and and no negative effect where that. Who puts a garage almost on the road and at the furthest point from their house? It it's just. It's. Outside these windows that we're sitting at right now in our office, it's within a forty five degree angle, the complete garage would be within our eyesight. It's completely out of any of their view of any of their living room windows. Doesn't depositioning is there's something to me, there's got to be almost something else to it. But. I'm totally against where it's being positioned.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Any other neighbors? Butters?
Uh, yeah, it's me, Jess Leary at Six Edge Water. And my main concern remains the same, just, uh, issues for water runoff. What exactly are the detailed plans or site plan for drainage? Because either way, I'm going to get creamed and so is so are the Hurths next to me. So it goes to Traboo's, Traboo's, myself, and then the Hurts. Uh, I'm I'm in between the lowest and the Hurts being the lowest of when water comes down that hill and now off this new enormous roof line. Um, I can't make sense of how. I I I don't get it on the site plan. I haven't, I don't feel real good about it yet. Um, maybe I missed something. Did I miss anything? Because. Why aren't we not discussing the water runoff more for me anyway? That's my concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I don't believe, do we have any other butters on the call who?
Yes, Marie Scott Pelley, One Edge Water, right opposite Mytuskas.
Okay.
My question is to Mike and Maureen. You mentioned that this would enhance. Enhance the neighborhood. Can you describe how?
Go ahead, you can answer that, Mr. and Mrs. Uh. Makowska.
Wait a minute.
Yes, that's right. Yes, I I I'm saying that from the standpoint, I feel that when anybody improves their property, increase the value. I think it's good for the neighborhood and it helps everybody in general. Now, obviously, there's always a possibility that that enhancement can can go the other direction. But that is somebody goes, you know. You know, again, the other meeting, putting the electric sign out there. The neighbors, you know, would would not like something like that. But I think in this case, there's going to be a garage in the property. That's going to obviously increase the value. It's going to be something I need to. For the storage and stuff that I that I need on my property. And to make my choice to me is that garage or multiple buildings, I think is going to look worse. So I thought this was the the lesser of the evils as far as. Other structures, because it's not going to stay. On a property like mine, it's not going to stay that way forever with no garage.
I understand that, but the position of this proposed garage. The position is almost on the street. And it's, it doesn't seem to be consistent with. House and a garage. What we see here in the neighborhood.
There are several houses in the neighborhood. You know, for example, the former, uh. Lapping property, you know, the the Lapping passed away, but the family still owns it. Their garage is a little bit like about eight feet, ten feet from the street, whatever that small distance is. You know, if you go down the street, uh, to Mary's house, the log cabin, same things, it's right up against the street, right next to the Fuller Residence.
Okay, but the size might be consistent.
Ma'am, I I I don't want, excuse me, we're not, I don't want to get into a back and forth between, uh. Between neighbors, but I I'm guessing it sounds like you're not in favor of of the.
Aesthetically, no. Aesthetically speaking, no.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes, Chris?
Can I ask Marie a question?
Sure.
Absolutely, sure.
So Marie, I I understand that you're directly across from, um, the applicant. Is that my understanding? And the applicant made a comment earlier that he was keeping it close to the lot line, so your view wouldn't be blocked. Um, is it my understanding that this would enhance your view or decrease your view from your perspective?
Decrease the view, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Any other butters or anyone else, uh, on the call that needs to or on the Zoom that needs to, uh, would like to make a comment?
Hey, John, it's it's Nora again, and I I don't want to. Beat a dead horse or be repetitive. I. I I applaud them for addressing the runoff and 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 that, but I need I need quantification of what that that means.
Yeah, no, I I.
I accept it without knowing that.
Yeah, no, I have I have a note here to to make to comment on that going forward. What I what I want to do at this point is I I do think we've focused so much on the garage that there there is a second part to the, uh. To the petition, uh, and that has to do with, uh, the sixteen by twelve, uh. Pavilion, uh, patio, I believe, that, uh, we have, uh, we've we've neglected to really have any conversations about, so. I guess at this point, I I know it was presented and and talked about at the last meeting. Um, I guess I'm going to go to my, uh. Board members, um, because we did not actually ask, uh, the Martowskis to do anything, or I believe to come back with any additional information. But do we have questions or concerns or comments in regards to that portion of the, uh? Of the petition? Anyone?
John, I do not with that portion.
Chris?
Yeah, could we pull the site plan up again so we could see the pavilion, um, since we spent so much time on it? I I actually don't know what we're talking about.
I can I'll get that up for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you share the screen?
Yeah.
Can you see it?
Not yet.
Think you have to hit share screen down at the bottom. The green.
Yep. Hang on one second, share screen. Okay, here.
Now you see it?
You're doing it off.
Try again, go back.
Okay, here it comes. We got it.
Can you put your cursor over where the pavilion is going to be?
The pavilion is right here.
And that's an open top pavilion or is that a hard, um, impervious?
That's a roof.
It's a roof line, so impervious. But open on the bottoms, open on all four sides?
Yes.
What's over in that area now? Or is there or is there anything preexisting?
Just grass.
Well, it's kind of gravel. I threw some sawed over it for a wedding we just had here, but that's not going to take. There's there's sitting on top of hard hard pan. And part of where the pavilion is, I had to, that's part of a hill right now where the grass dies off. So the elevation will be changing there from where it is now. So. As it goes towards the lake, I had to do some fill in behind the tanning wall to get the pavilion area, uh, flat.
It looks like from Google Earth that you have some trees there now. Do you have to cut down existing trees to to put this pavilion in?
The trees are already gone.
You've already removed them?
Yes, that was a consultation with the Conservation Commission.
All right, thank you. And what about your neighbor on Nelson Shore? Are they for or against this pavilion?
I've spoken to them. They have, they don't seem to have any problem with it. If you look at where the cursor is over here, because they have the boat house over here. And, you know, where that mansion I showed you the picture of earlier is is set up. That their main mansion is further away, then they have a breezeway and the original, uh. Home that was there in the first place is used as a indoor apartment or a guest house. And that's kind of so many feet from the property line from there. So they they've had no problem, you know, I've talked to them, they didn't seem to have any problem with it. And obviously, they've gone and noticed for this to comment. They haven't commented on it.
Uh, I don't think the size of this building is the size and scale that we're talking about in the front yard, so I don't seem to have a problem with this one.
Jerry, do you have a? Any questions, comments on this this structure?
I have no issues with the pavilion, Chairman.
Let's see, uh. Chris Cheedy?
I'm not hearing any objections from the neighbor and, uh, it's open on four sides, so I don't, I don't see it being a problem.
Was it? I did. Go ahead, Jerry.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that it was open on all four sides. Is that confirmed?
Yes, our plan is to have, you know, a four column pavilion with a hard roof.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Makowski, are you going to have, uh, roof drains and are you going to address the drainage on that pavilion as well?
That hasn't, I mean, I would say I do where that water is going to go. You know, it won't, it won't go south. That's the that's the easy part. But at the same time, I don't want to have washouts on my own property either. So I I when I get those retaining walls, I do it for the engineers and say, how can I best guide the water from the patio areas and stuff like that? As far as the main house, if you look at the site plan, it points out where I have all the downspouts from the house right now. Affected directly underground to the lake.
Here.
You know, there there should be dotted lines on the map there, show where they where they go through. I don't. It should be on the updated drawing. I I thought I thought double check what happened to them, but there are downspouts right now, the affixed to the lake. Which I had approval from the Conservation Commission when they first built the house to do that. So what I would probably try to do is have some drain set up for the for the solid patio parts, but potentially go into that same drain. Likewise, for the stairway coming down, since that's going to be solid. The walkway coming down the stairs to gather the water that way. You know, and part of these retaining walls, the whole idea is it's going to be flatter than it is now. Uh, for the grounds, or hopefully you'll have a better chance to percolate and not run down to the lake that way.
Well, I would have the caveat that if we approved the pavilion, that we would have it, um, the drainage approved the same way you had the drainage from your house approved. Through conservation to be run into the lake, not on your late neighbor's property.
Well, I've already viewed this plan with the Conservation Commission and they did not give me any, uh, constraints beyond what I have there now. I discussed these dishes with them.
I'm asking you to do so now.
You go back to them again?
Well, at at least get their approval for drainage, um. A similar drainage style and then not put it on your neighbor's property. Again, that's the major concern here. Not directing the water from your property under your neighbors.
No, if you look, if you if you saw the whole property, you could see the elevation from the neighbor's yard. There's no way it goes from my property to there.
On the map now.
Say it again?
The water is going to run.
You know, it can't run to my neighbor to the north. It can only run towards the lake.
All right, so. Do we have any other comments or questions on the, uh, pavilion? Sounds like the board is has. Other than Chris's concern about, uh. About making sure the runoff, uh, doesn't impact anyone else. Did I hear someone? Nora, were you trying to?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mary Traboo, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mary.
Is there a setback, um? Requirement on that pavilion? Oh, I I'm only. I bring up this because that property is for sale and, um.
What property?
Next to the Martaskas on the north. So those property owners aren't here. And would that then be? Something that needs to be? Just disclosed to a new buyer that they're going to be building something. That's not. Within the proper setback?
Well, I mean, this is on record at this point, so if if there was a potential buyer, um, they would be able to. Find out what's going on with their their neighbor if they went to the building department or commissioner. I mean, it's not our, unfortunately, it's not our obligation. I should say fortunately it isn't, but maybe for your question, unfortunately, it's not our obligation to, um. Put. Future owners on notice of of things going on. That's why, you know, you folks. On the other side, obviously, have concerns with what's going on with the garage. If the. People who are in the house now and have it for sale aren't concerned that he's going to encroach into the setback a little bit, um. You know, that's, I mean, again, we 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 take the neighbors, uh. Considerations in into into our decision making process, so.
Okay.
And and they don't seem to have a problem with it by the fact that they were notified and and aren't showing up in opposition. They notified the same way you you folks were notified. So here is. Here is where I think we are at this point. Um, you can you can unshare the screen now. This is, um.
Okay, yep.
Martowska. So. I I I I don't think it's a secret. If we call the vote at this point, you're, uh, probably not going to get the result that you would like. You 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 may get it for the smaller portion of the project, but, um. Definitely not for the, um. For the garage is 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 my takeaway. I I think there are. I think the main issue here. Uh, this this. There's. Two main issues. One main issue is the the relief you're looking for is more to do with, um, and I really don't like to use the word, but I can't think of something else at this point. It's more of a men. Aesthetic or maybe maybe a better way to describe it is a personal preference as to where you'd like that garage to be. To be placed, uh, for your for your benefit. As. As board member Carmichael pointed out, um. You know, a lot of this water mitigation you're talking about, uh, I'm not going to, I'm not going to encapsulate it all to this, but the majority of it, you're going to have to deal with anyways if you're putting up a structure of that size on your property. Even if you didn't have to come before us, if you went straight to the building commissioner. I do think there's the potential possibility that, uh, that this board may. And I emphasize may be open to, uh, probably not a ten foot setback, but something. Less than a twenty foot setback, but. I think our our major concern is, uh, we're we're very unsure of of, um. Of of runoff in the presentation, um. And and our questions haven't been haven't been fully or accurately answered, and and that's in no way any disrespect to the petitioners, but. You may be better served by having an your engineer here to really be able to answer the questions, um, for us to feel comfortable that. The neighbors are going to not be impacted whatsoever and that we may be able to potentially give them some type of it, some type of an accommodation, which is within our purview. But I think short of that, um, you know, a lot of the questions that have been brought up have to do with. The technical aspect of of the the site plan that you you provided and, um, you know, I'm familiar with Outback and I I. I know it's a legitimate, real site plan, but I will. Tell you right now, I am, it's not my profession to be able to read these, uh, site plans. I think we have one board member who's probably a little more versed at it than the rest of us, but. You know, none of us are. Trained engineers, and if we have Outback here to explain exactly how everything's going to work and play out to protect the neighbors. I think that was in a position to, again, maybe I'll emphasize possibly grant some type of relief. That's that's not a guarantee, but. I think that's your only, um, possible. Uh, option at this point. So I don't open that or you or you're you're more than willing to, if you want to ask me to call for a vote, I will be more than happy to do so, but remember. You need a super majority, so you need four out of the five, uh, board members. uh, you need a super majority, so you need four out of the five, uh, board members to vote in favor in order to, uh, to grant the special permit.
I, I hear you and I, we did ask Outback to be here tonight, but they couldn't make it. Uh, if you feel I can get some relief, that, I'm going to put it this way, I know you can't commit to which way people are going to be voting, I understand that. But, uh, I'm getting the impression that maybe I won't, uh, get the, the setback that I'm asking for. But there might be a chance with additional input today, they may grant something. If I, my other option is if I say vote tonight, while Zado turn, turn that part down and I can just put this to bed for now and, and move forward and work with a mitigating, uh, system later on. But if I'm going to pay for that system and it's going to be effectively the same cost, I'd rather do it with a chance to get it closer, uh, to the, the property line as I've asked for, and, or closer to the street. Uh, so I'm willing to continue to the next meeting and get somebody back here to answer any other questions you have on that.
I, I think that gives you your best opportunity, sir, like I said, I'll, I'll emphasize it again, just for the record, uh, that may be the, the only option you have to potentially get some, some type of relief. Again, that's, it's, and as you, as you, I believe, understand, that's a, a big maybe in itself, but, uh.
Yeah, I, I realize there's no guarantees, but, I mean, to, to, you know, depending on to a meeting, discuss and answer your question, you give everybody all that peace of mind. And that would include the water runoff to the lake. You know, to answer any questions there as well from the, from the pavilion. You know, I mean, that's probably good for the record as well, so I have no problem with that, just to have information on the record and answer your questions.
I was going to suggest, if they're coming in to explain the water runoff for the garage, um, and, and to answer any other questions, you, you may as well satisfy, uh, uh, Mr. Carmichael as well as the rest of the board in, in that the, you know, to, to deal with the runoff for, for the, for the pavilion, which, um, it appears most, most board members or all board members don't have an issue with, so, that being said.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one question. Is it your preference to, um, you know, if we do decide, if you do, we do decide to continue this regarding the garage portion, is it possible to vote on the patio part, the, the, the other side of the property that we just discussed?
Well, fortunately I have counsel here, I'm going to give you my, what I think is the answer and then she's going to tell me whether I'm right or not. I, I, I'm believing she's going to say this is all filed under one petition, so we're better off voting one petition at the same time as opposed to breaking it out. We probably technically could, but where we're also going to ask you, since Outback, you guys are going to ask Outback to come to address the, to drain, you know, the, 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 the water runoff on the pavilion, uh, I'm going to guess we'd maybe safer to wait until next time.
I understand, you know.
Yeah.
My hope was that the, uh, Outback, uh, being, being a stamped drawing in that, I'm not an expert in this either. And I would have felt, I asked them, you know, to, to address that issue and I, we gave them a copy within the minutes. Uh, you know, that part of the minutes about the water flow, so I was hoping that, that letter would, would, would address that, but apparently it doesn't, so.
That's, Mr. Macosse, no, no need to apologize, we're, we're, that's not necessary, we're here to try to, try to do what we can for everybody and if there's an opportunity to approve stuff, we can, but we need to make sure it's done the right way and that, uh, you know, we, we, you know, we, we take care of, uh, everyone in the town as best as possible, so having said that, I will entertain a motion to continue this meeting, um, I, I'm going to assume you should be able to get Outback, uh, to confirm they can get one of their, I know that's a good-sized firm, one of their folks out here on, or one of those, on, somebody online, uh, on the 15th, so I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing until December 15th.
So moved.
Nora made the motion, do we have a second? Someone's going to unmute themselves to second.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded, I will call roll call, Jerry.
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael? You're muted.
I would have to vote no, I think we've heard enough.
Okay, and Chris Sheedy?
Um, no.
Okay, well, I would vote in favor to continue, but let me ask Amy.
Super majority. Majority. It's just a majority because you're just continuing.
Okay. All right, so we are going to continue, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Martowska, please make sure Outback is here and, and just so you know, to prepare yourselves, um, I'm, I'm going to be expecting Outback to do the presentation and answer the questions, um. And, uh, we're going to try to keep this relatively brief and, and get to a decision relatively quickly. Uh, we don't, I, I, my preference is not to go beyond a third meeting.
Right, no, we, we had them at the Conservation Commission meeting, so I know they can have representatives, but they weren't able to do it tonight.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, that brings us to housekeeping. Uh, we have some meeting minutes to approve, uh.
So Mr. Chairman, um, you had asked me to look into the May 7th, um, minutes and how we deal with those. Um, and so it just so happens that I was actually at that meeting. So what I would like to propose is that, um, I am going to go through these minutes and I'm going to pare them down significantly, um, to only what's required under the statute, which is essentially who was there, what was done and what votes were taken. Um, and then I think that, um, between you and I, I, I mean, the, the minutes correctly reflect what happened, I've read, I've read them, they correctly reflect what happened, however, um, if they're, if they're pared down, um, and if you agree that that's what happened, um, we could, the board can then vote. This existing board can then vote.
Okay, nope, sounds good.
So if, if we could just hold those off till the next meeting, I'll, I'll send a new set to, um, Kathy and she can just send them out to everybody.
Absolutely, okay, yeah, pair them down, you and I will confirm it's accurate and, uh, we'll be able to vote on those next time out, so. Okay, let's see, we have, um, October 1st, 2020 meeting minutes to approve. Um, everyone should have received them in their packet, do we have anyone who wants to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of October 1st.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Think, I think Chris said second, Nora made the motion, uh, all in favor, Jerry?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yay.
Chris Sheedy? Uh, let's see, Chris Campo, were you at the meeting?
Which meeting?
Uh, October 1st, I believe you were sworn in.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're in favor of the meeting minutes being approved?
Yeah.
Uh, the, the minutes reflect that he was not sworn in.
Oh, but he was at the meeting, so does he have to, that's right, he wasn't sworn in, he was at that meeting, does he need to be voted?
Yeah, so, but we, just because he, he could if he had to, but he doesn't have to.
All right, hang on Chris, you're going to get the vote on the next one and I'm in favor. Just keep that of meeting minutes, do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Nora's motion, uh, you have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded, all in favor, Jerry?
Yay.
Nora?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Chris Sheedy?
Yay.
All right, Chris Campo, you're on this one.
I can talk.
You can say yes or no, that's it.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor. Uh, okay, do we have any old business to come before this committee? I hope not. And any new business within your package, you had some information on, um, e-fall workshops for CPTC which have to do with learning all sorts of fun stuff about zoning, so take a look at the packet and if you're interested in signing up in any of those, I would suggest you, uh, reach out to Kathy and Kathy can, uh, coordinate, making sure you know how to get signed up and whatever reimbursements the town needs to make in order to, uh, offset the expense for those.
I would highly recommend those, especially because our own Amy Questle is, is an administrator or a teacher.
I'm doing one on Saturday morning if anyone would like to join me.
What's this one on?
That's the kind of life I have.
I'm sorry to hear that, what's this one?
I wasn't going to say anything Amy, but I'm not sure I'm going to be there on Saturday, so.
No, it's, yeah.
In any event, uh, okay, do we, uh, anybody else have anything? If not?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, in order to, to put all the information into one spot, I sent out an email at the beginning of this meeting. I felt bad for Kathy, our, um, our admin, that she was trying to take all this 12-hour information and put out, she put out probably a dozen emails. And what, now we're trying to review all this different information, so I would make a suggestion that we have a one-week deadline for any submittal so that we could put it all in one spot, whether it's, uh, on the cloud or it's in an email and then we can review it. I think these 12-hour submittals do not help us at all.
Uh, well, I'm going to ask Amy to chime in because I'm in complete agreement with you, Chris. I don't know if we have the availability to tell someone who is on the docket, so to speak, that they can't bring additional information. I think, to your point, Chris, right now we're getting everything through email, nobody's in front of us. It's one thing to show up at the meeting and have it in front of you to kind of to take a look at and have them present, and I, and that was my point in asking Amy earlier about, do we, you know, can we accept it via Zoom? And my guess is we probably need to accept it as late as it comes in, or can we put a restriction on it? I prefer to.
So you can, you can put a restriction on it, what that would mean was that it wouldn't be necessarily considered that night. Um, so the problem that you are going to have is that you are going, you're going to run into instances where you have a simple, simple project and they submitted a minor change to you that night. And you don't want to hold them off until the next meeting because, you know, it's, it's nothing. Um, so I think that, I think that there, you should have a policy that all new information should be submitted a week ahead of time. Um, but I, I, at the same time, I think you should also be flexible. When someone does, you cannot, um, you are correct, Mr. Chairman, you cannot reject a document at a meeting. Um, you, you have to take it in, um, but it doesn't mean that you are ready, that you are ready to vote on it, you know, that night. And if you decide to, if you ask the applicant for a continuance and they don't give you a continuance, um, then, you know, it would be part of the record that they gave it to you that night and you didn't have enough cha, you know, you didn't have enough time to review it, um, which I think would be a valid reason.
Yeah, that's, so, so.
So I would make a motion that we impose a one-week deadline with the caveat that this board has the discretion of, um, asking for a continuance or not.
I would second that.
And, and the board has the discretion whether to consider it that night or not.
Thank you Amy for clarifying that.
Okay, do we, do we, do we need a vote on that Amy, or can we just, can I?
You know, I would, I would, um, because then, um, that gives Kathy some ammunition that she can say to people, well, hey, listen, on, you know, November 19th, they voted this policy.
So let me ask you this, because I, again, I'm, I'm in favor of that, I, I would prefer to have stuff early on as opposed to getting it even two days before, forget about the night before, um. How do we make that determination or, or how do we, you know, how do we use the discretion as to what we are going to accept and aren't going to accept and can we get ourselves into hot water for that? Just so I know, because obviously I'm going to be still one determining.
So I think that, um, so when somebody comes in, um, and they have a, a new plan because they were at conservation the night before and conservation asked them to move something. You know, they didn't have a chance to have it in a week ahead of time, but, um, you know, this, this Outback letter, um, you know, the plan, those kind of things should be in a week ahead of time, um, you know.
Good.
We, we continued them last hearing, last month, so, so we're, essentially they've had two months, you know, to get everything together. Um, but, you know, again, you just, I, I think you're just going to have to be flexible.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. Um, okay, so we have a motion made by Chris. I believe Nora seconded it and I'm assuming we have no further discussion, so I'll call the vote.
Uh, real quick, when, when can we institute this policy change? Is that for the next upcoming meeting, Amy, or is that something that has to go out for notice?
No, no, it's just a policy, um, so, you know, we're not enacting regulations or anything and, and, you know, you know, this was new business and this was something that the chair did not anticipate, you know, to be on the agenda because it all happened tonight.
Yeah, and to your point Amy, I think, you know, the next meeting, we may be a little more flexible because it's the new policy, but ultimately, Chris, two, three months down the road, we're going to say, listen, everybody knows what our policy is now.
Right, so any future submittals after today? After this date, any future submittals going forward, we need a one-week deadline. That, so I'll just add that to my, uh, initial motion.
And then, um, Kathy, we can possibly, um, work on some kind of application, um, packet and then it'll say it right on top. I was just thinking that too, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, I was going to comment, we need to let people know somehow or another.
So when they get their application, it'll all say.
Without us notifying, they're going to walk in, some engineering company who's been doing stuff with it 10 years and say, what do you mean, you won't take it three days before, so we'll need to make sure they know, that's my, that's my only point and we may need to be flexible for the first meeting or so, but after that.
Right, and all of this, all of this that we're doing, it's just, it's going to give Kathy some cover, so she can just say, here it is.
Absolutely.
John, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Along the same lines, I, I felt that, I thought that I was obligated to listen to the planning board tonight in regards to Bedford Street. Like, should I have not listened to that?
Well, no, I think, yeah.
Into account because I stayed on that meeting until it finished and I was obviously late for this because I thought, I thought it was sequential in nature.
Um, yeah, no, I mean, that was a very unique situation, that very rarely happens, uh, Kathy forwarded that to us only because they were going to be talking about the same stuff we were going to be talking about and, you know, it, it, at some point, honestly, there were a couple of questions I had before the meetings even started, but in listening to the first half an hour of the planning board before coming over to here, they had answered some parking questions and things like that, so I didn't even have to, to bring it up, so. I think it was more, so, again, it's very unique that that happens, but yeah, anytime in the future, if we, if, if we have a meeting, whatever time it starts, it's going to start, um. 99% of the time, unless we're actually participating in the other meeting and we weren't participating, we hadn't opened yet, we were just there as, um, you know, folks viewing the meet.
I got to ask, because I didn't attend that, were, were they doing a site plan approval for that and we're doing the special permit for the building, is that, is that what?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, okay, uh, so we have a motion, we have a second. Chris, Jerry?
Yay.
Uh, Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Chris Sheedy?
Yay.
Chris Carm, uh, Chris Carmichael, Chris Campo?
Yeah.
Uh, and I also in favor, so that policy will begin immediately, um, we'll get notifications out in some power with the packets and, uh, hopefully over the next month or two, people will realize they got to get this stuff in early and we'll, we'll be flexible only when we, when we really need to, um.
Otherwise Kathy's going to have a drinking problem and I, I just don't want to be responsible for that, though. It was too much tonight, sorry.
Uh, okay, uh, having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Don't move.
Don't move, Chris Campo made the motion, I need a second.
Second.
Jerry made the second, all right, uh, Jerry?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Chris Sheedy?
Yay.
Chris Campo?
Yeah.
And I am in favor, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much, uh, I, I promise that we don't have these marathons all the time. I'm, I'm, I, you know, we'll, we'll get to a point where we're in and out in an hour, hopefully.
Nice job, Mr. Chairman, well done again.
Thank you to everyone, have a good Thanksgiving.
Good night, everyone.